I'd like to call this special meeting of county council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Octavia, has this meeting been advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act of South Carolina?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Passment and a second by Councilman Larson, all in favor by show of hands. And that is unanimous. All right, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment.
Yeah, ma'am.
All right, okay. All right. Before we start, I'd just like to share something, a personal note that happened last night. I got to go to the Port Royal Town Council meeting, and for the first time ever, I saw a canine dog sworn in.
What?
And his name was Rocky.
Oh.
And his handler, she was promoted to corporal. So it was, it was unusual event in my experience of public service. And I hope all of you got to see something like that too in your lifetime. It was fun. Okay, we'll start with administrators initiatives. Thank you.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Counsel, great to be with you here for the next couple of days to dive into the budget a little bit. Where I wanted to do is talk about kind of where we started earlier this year, where we are now. And then we can talk about, you know, obviously, what are our initiatives for the next fiscal year. So with that in mind, what I'm going back to is the Resolution 2025-31 that were the priorities and goals that were set out from our strategic retreat earlier this year. And we had 22 items. You can see the status, and I'm going to walk through that. And then I'm going to talk about some of the administration initiatives that we're going to look at for this coming year. Coming out of this retreat, you know, speaking with Pinky, one of our goalists is to have a similar type resolution that gives direction and guidance to administration and staff as we're putting the budget together and as well as what we're going to plan for the next fiscal year. So the first thing we talked about was focus on people. We talked about a flat rate COLA. We did implement that for this fiscal year. The next thing we talked about, we're updating the employee handbook. We have updated disaster pay policies. Remote work is still in progress, and that will come back to finance in, in January. The next thing we talked about was a hybrid step system to allow managerial flexibility to reward high performers. We've done the study. We've had that report out, and we're going to discuss that further. But we are prepared to implement that going forward. And we can talk about the timing and as to when we're going to implement. The fourth shift for EMS, we had an update on that, I think, last week, where we are there. That's still in progress. We've updated the organization chart, which we shared with you earlier. Happy to announce, and I sent you all the notice, but we do have our deputy county administrator hired. She will be here December 1st, and first council meeting will introduce her. And I'm really excited about getting her on board and getting her to work, so, coming from Greenville County. And of course, we hired our CFO this year, Pinky. And so we've got a team we put together, the executive team, so that's good news. The next thing, facilities. We talked about doing a facilities study. We kicked that study off. We put funding in for the FY '26. That study is still underway. It will not be complete in time to put into the next budget, but we do expect it to be complete. So we'll essentially put aside a similar amount for facilities funding this next fiscal year. And then going forward, we should have the study, which we will present to you all. And then we will have, be able to plan that out over multiple fiscal years. We've talked about the finalized list of county-owned vacant lands. And we still have to consider which parcels do we want to declare access and how we want to move forward there. But it's obviously part of affordable housing, which we're going to talk about as well as part of this budget retreat. The next we talked about was focus on finance and transparency. We did move the solid waste enterprise fund back into the general fund. The garage ISF has been established. And then we used $15 million of the general fund balance to close out some projects. And we did reallocate the funding for BMH and TCL, those two projects. One of the things, we launched the FY '26 digital budget book. And in terms of potential future referendum, we have discussed that. We have, council has voted to move forward with the committee. We're in the process now notifying municipalities to get their representatives. And then each of you all will have your nomination for the committee as well. Next, focus on transparency, facilitate a series of council workshops. We have done some workshops. There may be more workshops we can talk about for next year. That may be some outcomes of our discussions here in the retreat. But we have had workshops on personnel, we've had workshops on the transportation referendum. But there are other areas we can discuss. To me, CIP would be an opportunity for a workshop and potentially some discussions on park and rec facilities, because I know there's been discussion about, about those. Conduct County Council meetings, both areas, we've done that this year. Quite a lot, actually. But we're going to be back in council chambers next month. And we're working on the schedule now, I know, to come forward to council in December. Okay, next, other priorities, gap insurance for retirees. We have had a presentation with you all on that. We're going to discuss that as part of the, this retreat. Recreation facility growth, as I mentioned before, is probably an opportunity for future input from council as far as where we see the needs. We want to, you know, take you all's inputs as far as where we are and where we need to go. Affordable housing, we had a good workshop yesterday with the Housing Trust. Hank is going to provide some updates on that in this retreat. And we'll talk about what other options we have and what else we think we can do to move forward on affordable housing. Website improvements, I think everybody would recognize that we need some improvements in the website. We are in the process of a, with the RP and getting a contractor onboard to start the website. So that is moving forward, and we can have some discussions on that as needed. I believe Hank and Hannah are running point on that project. Broadcasting and tech improvements for hybrid and virtual meetings, obviously, that's, we've had our challenges this year. When we go back into council chambers, we will have an upgrade to our equipment over there. We're working to integrate IT more fully into the process of the meetings and the broadcast to help address some of the issues we've had. So that's in progress and continuing. We will hopefully see positive results when we get back over next door. The transportation, that was kind of a general statement, but I think we've made some progress there. Specifically with the 2018 referendum, how we prioritize that. And we've also got the Transportation Referendum Committee going forward. So those are, to me, two big ticket items there. If there's other things we need to look at transportation, we can have that discussion. With the ferry along the lines of transportation, there is a study that's going to be done led by SCA. I believe the state's got funding for that. And that's going to look at, not just in Beaufort County, but it's going to look more statewide at ferry transportation. So that's a good opportunity. The other thing discussed here, we do have the contract that has been addressed, at least for the next, for the next three and a half years, three years. But we do need to discuss the potential to relocate the ferry landing from CC Hague to an alternate site due to the bridge construction, which will be in 2027. So that's something that's on my mind quite a lot. We've been working with the town of Hilton Head Island on Jenkins Island. We've got good progress there, working with Mark Orlando and team. So we're going to continue that. And as part of our budgeting process, we're going to look at if we need to enter into design contracts for other facilities to support the Fuscoa ferry. So there'll be discussions on that. The fire district consolidation, I know Mr. Robinson provided an update on where we are on that. So that's continuing in progress. Detention center needs, we, you know, we have challenges with the detention center and material condition. We've had those discussions with you all. We're going to continue to maintain the detention center. But the question is, is out there, you know, what's the future of the detention center? But as it stands now, we're going to continue to maintain the detention center as it is. But as an aging facility, it's going to continue to require a lot of investment to maintain the quality of the facility. I'm just going to throw out some other accomplishments. We've implemented years of service recognition program for employees. I think that's a good notable accomplishment this year, recognize our long-serving county employees. We've got our digital budget book. We updated the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust MOU, which was positive. And then, as we talked about, as I mentioned on Monday, we want a distinguished budget presentation and certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So for coming up, the items on the resolution, I've kind of outlined where we are with those. Our objective is to stain those and continue them into the next fiscal year, subject to any input council we have on that. One of the things we talked with our, during our budget presentations, and these are some things I'll mention when we had our initial discussions with staff and elected officials, is at least from administration side, we're going to look at personnel vacancies, as well as if we get new personnel requests. Do we have vacancies with new personnel requests? If we haven't filled vacancies, then I'm not inclined to improve new positions. And I think we need to go back and look at those positions that we can't fill. Do we need to consider reducing those? Because that creates a surplus, and we would prefer not to have the kind of surpluses we see in personnel accounts in the past. 2026 transportation, we've talked about that. We're going to continue that. I've discussed with Jared, we're going to outline essentially, you're getting, once we get the committee members going forward, we're going to set up, you know, at least our initial meeting, the logistics and how we're going to implement the strategy there and logistics for the commission. But we're excited to engage with them and move forward on getting some projects available for the ballot. Next, I want to talk about, we haven't talked about that much here, is AI. Everybody knows it's out there. And if you went to the SEAC conference, they had a pretty good presentation on that. Jared's kind of been spearheading AI, and we're going to have some discussions on that, I believe, tomorrow. So we can get more in depth with, one of the initiatives is I want to work on creating an AI policy. We do have ICMA, International City County Manager Association, has a conference next March on AI dedicated to that. So we'd like to send some staff to that so that we can get a head start on creating a policy. AI is here, and I think we need to be mindful in how we implement it and have a policy. Next, improve citizen communications. We have BC Connect. We've had challenges with BC Connect. I also give Jared credit because we had discussions about a number of service requests. And citizens would say, well, I put a service request in, and I never got any updates. Well, we, we found where the bottlenecks on that were and some personnel had moved. And the system just wasn't communicating the way it was. So we've addressed that, and we have a good strategy going forward. However, with the BC Connect, it's an older system. It's not really countywide. And so what we want to talk about is improving means of communication for citizens, whether that be an app, phone. I think we can, we can improve there. So that's something I'd like to, to look at as far as investing in our communications. That includes a citizen gram. And I know some have mentioned a county brochure, so if there's desire for that, we can, we can have that conversation. But I think anything we could do to help not only communicate to our citizens, but get their input, whether it be a service request, I got a light that's out, or something else, they can communicate that to us better. And then we can track it, and then we can use that for metrics. That's my end state, is I know some of you all were at the presentation at SEAC where they talked about metrics. Well, I don't think we have a lot of metrics right now. And I'd like to get to the point where we can say, we had, you know, 35 citizens request service, and we can look at the, at the man hours, we can drill down on that. So that's kind of my vision of where we want to go long term, but we'll continue to work on that. The fleet usage and size, that's something I want to look at, at least on administration. I'm not, right now, I'm not talking about elected officials, so that wouldn't include any of them. But at least on the administration side, are we, do we have the right number of vehicles? Do we need a vehicle, or, you know, should employees just, you know, submit for reimbursement? That's the question I have, is does every department need a pool vehicle? You know, the take-home vehicles? So that's something I want to look at, because obviously, fleet size drives cost. And if we can get efficient there, I think that's a good initiative we should look at in 2026. Wex card program, which is the gas program. We had one case of some misuse of the Wex card. We've addressed that with that employee, who's no longer with the county. And, but we want to look at that to help make sure we've got all the appropriate safeguards in place for Wex card. Along with that travel policy, I know I've discussed that with Pinky, so we're going to look at our travel policy as well. Health insurance, rate review, our health insurance, this is what the employees pay for health insurance. We're going to look at that. You know, are rates appropriate? We haven't raised them in a while, and I'm not suggesting we're going to go and raise them a lot, but we may need to look at that. And that's a conversation I like to have with you all, as far as where we are and if we need to make any adjustments there. So those are my initiatives. Yes, sir?
Can we have a little conversation about some of those items?
Absolutely. That's, I've just kind of teed this up. Of course, y'all have your opportunity for initiatives, but we can talk about this as well, right now.
Yeah. I'd like to go back to the communications, the meetings and how they are done online. I've taken care of-
This one, you mean?
No. Our broadcasting.
Okay.
I've had to be online several times because of illness. I've been out of town, so on and so forth. I find when I'm online with my computer, my computer will freeze. And it's delayed. I don't know, I don't think it's my side, but I can't be sure of that. So that's something we have to take a look at.
Okay.
I will tell you-
She was here, but anyway, we'll address that.
I will tell you, when we are in executive session, you can't hear the people in executive session. So if we're going to be in executive session, we need microphones so that you can clearly hear the people, because there's a lot of echoing that goes on all the time. If you're watching on television, it is delayed, by the way, if you didn't know that. The broadcasting on television is not the same as what we see. So that may be a good thing. So those are some of the things that I see that we need to improve in a hybrid situation.
Okay, and is that the case at all the sites, or is it, it's-
Every single site.
Everywhere we go, you have to-
Everywhere we go, if we're in executive session, you cannot hear the people in there. And it's not necessarily their fault, it's just the way the room is set up.
Right, and we don't have microphones all around the table, so that's something we'll look at.
Now, in going to your priority list-
Yes.
The, the one about fleet usage-
Yes.
Do we use the IRS mileage reimbursement?
We do, I'll verify that.
Okay, all right, that's-
We do use the IRS, and that we'll adjust, and that's something we're going to talk about.
Every, every December, starting for January through the year.
Right, in terms of the IRS rate and in terms of reimbursement per DM, those are things we'd want to discuss.
Right, that's currently in our travel policy. We encourage them to use our fleet versus their personal vehicle. So if a county vehicle is available and they use their personal anyway, we only reimburse it half the rate.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very, I'm very familiar with the, it wasn't called Wex card where I use it, but that. Is it, you have your own card to gas up?
You have a PIN number.
A PIN number?
So each individual is assigned a PIN number. They could be used on multiple cards. So it's an individual has a PIN number that they use, and it could be used anywhere.
All right. It may be necessary for a two-step authorization, one at the pump? And you, because it's for your car, it's for your own personal, sorry about that.
It's designed for a county vehicle, but what we found is it can be circumvented and used for personal vehicles. That was the challenge we had.
Yeah, because at the pump, it was always the vehicle had its own identification-
Yes.
At the pump, as well as the person. So it may be something we have to go-
Yes, and our audit, auditors looking at that program as part of our audit this year.
And I absolutely agree with you about the AI policy. AI is here to stay. It's either garbage in, garbage out, depending upon how you use it. That's going to be something, AI 101 training for individuals, training for council. Applaud you for that, that's something good.
Thank you.
Anybody else have some questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I'm very pleased that you've done a lot of the things we set forth in January, and we have more work to do. But many of the big items, like the steps and the merit and the retiree, those were key items, and I'm glad that we have delved into those. I know we have more work to do, but this was a good recap, in my mind. And it's good for the public to hear that, contrary to public opinion, we have accomplished a few things.
We have.
I agree with you, Vice Chair.
I had a comment, I, oh, go ahead, I'll go last, go ahead.
Yeah, quickly, you didn't mention anything about broadband in rural areas. I hope you addressed that as well, because there's still a need to, and I need basically an update on that, I guess, to move it, you know, forward and stuff. But don't forget that we got a-
I'm looking at Hank, and we'll get you an update on that.
You know, but we got to address broadband in rural community. The other thing that I have-
I believe that's ARPA, right? Do you want to, do you want to talk briefly about that? We can, if you like.
Watch out for static electricity.
Yeah.
So the first broadband initiative by Hargray out on St. Helena has been completed, and they've sent us in their data to prove that they're getting the speeds in the area, so they'll get their reimbursement soon. The northern, but also stretches down into Ladies Allen-St. Helena as well, through Brightspeed. They're finalizing their design and should begin construction very soon. And that goes up into the northern part of the county from Ladies Allen-St. Helena, runs through town. So those two, and that, so that project, I think, was $360, something thousand dollars to push that. Those are the two ARPA-funded projects. Future initiatives would have to be funded differently, but those are the two ones to do funded and under-construction projects.
Yeah, I just don't want to forget that. And so it's, it's some areas of St. Helena being covered, but it's not all of it.
So based on that, we can add that to our list of priorities for-
Well, that's why we're discussing.
Exactly. So we'll add that to the list.
The other one I noted was a facility study.
Yes.
I'm hoping you mean facility updates, updated study.
This is a facilities condition assessment. So this has to do with assessing the age of the facilities, the roofs, the HVAC, the mechanical, electrical.
Make this statement, that when I came on council, we did a study. And we had some needs, et cetera, et cetera, and we have not addressed those needs. But that study was done, I don't know, at least seven years ago. So we're going to do another study, or we're going to take that study and update it? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I think, just to clarify, you're asking about size of a, in other words, if we have the counties growing, what do we need to do versus the condition of our existing facilities? So I'm trying to understand which-
Well, all I know is that it's-
It's a combination of both.
Yeah, and because the study was done, and we wait, we spent a lot of money on that study.
And I think Jared was here, you were here at that time.
Yeah, we did, the study that you're referencing was a facility space needs analysis. And we did that in 2021. And out of that, we talked about a couple of different priority projects and buildings. One being the Public Works Building, EMS Building, administrative and law enforcement and detention. Those are kind of the five parts. And then we had a couple of site plans on here. We had some costs ranging from, they're around $300 million to execute all those types of projects. But we initiated the Public Works Building, and the EMS headquarters is kind of the next on the list, but we haven't funded that project yet. And so since then, we've also bought the law enforcement, the 100 acres there. So that was a result of that study. What Mike referenced now, what we're doing is we're doing a condition assessment of our existing studies. So as we march forward, the goal is to have a couple long-term plans that we can, we can have a, we know how much money we need. Instead of having a yo-yo of each year, where we think we need this much versus that much. We know if we need to invest in new buildings, we're going to have these buildings, and this is the amount we're going to need. To keep our, our existing buildings in good condition, we need this set amount. And then also to update and renovate, just paint carpet, stuff like that, we're going to, we're going to come back with a plan for that. So we're going to have three plans eventually, new projects, maintenance of systems, and then maintenance of carpet and stuff.
I think, I guess, the challenge is that as a council, we have to bite the bullet to fund.
Yeah.
Yes, and part of what we're talking about is we'll have predictable funding for facilities maintenance, because we'll understand when we need to replace a roof, when we need to replace an HVAC. Obviously, things break, but we want to try to get ahead of that with this facilities maintenance plan, as we call it.
Okay.
When do you think that'll be completed?
I want to say next year.
Spring to summer of '26. And then so we'll have a 20-year plan of the maintenance of all of our roofs, HVACs. So we'll load that into our facilities maintenance CIP budget next year in what would be '28 budget season.
Yes, sir.
And that's a good thing for a variety of reasons. One, that allows you to have an annual amount of money to maintain these buildings. Number two, for insurance purposes, we have an inventory of all of our buildings. And that, that's pretty good. I would also say, we would want to have an inventory of what's in the building, because they have a lifespan to them. So besides the envelope, what is in the building that could cause us money having to be spent?
In other words, the FFE, the furniture, the fixtures, those type of things.
Absolutely, because again, that's insurance. That's replacement of those kinds of things would be a good thing.
So we're in a step process at facilities, so we've got a great leader in Frank Stronchad, our director there. And he's got this all in his head. And the goal is, we've got the facilities' space needs, we know how much space we need new. Then we're doing the assessment on the envelope and the equipment. And then next, we're going to work up a plan for replacement, whether it's bathrooms need updated, tile, carpet, all these things that they could break, or whether it's furniture as well, any of that interior stuff that doesn't affect the envelope, but it affects how we use our facilities.
Yes, and that's a good thing. But that's a long-term plan. I'm not saying that, you know, it should be part of this budget. But, you know, I put together a list of things that I think are important. That's on my list of things about county-owned buildings and property. Having an inventory of everything, having an annual budget for everything, and a long-term plan.
I think we're on, on a path to get there.
That's what we discussed in January.
Yes, it is, exactly. So we're on the path. I think that, these are all the next steps. And then, you know, we're actually, coming up at the Finance Committee, we're going to talk about some IT. And that's not an inexpensive investment either. We've got some significant investments we're going to make in IT, because some of our technology, and as you all know, you know, two or three years, it's, it's on to the next-
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next bit of technology, so that's something else we're looking at, is the IT portion.
Okay, I just had a couple of things, personnel vacancies and how long they've been vacant. I know some of those are hard to recruit, like for the detention center.
Detention center's a big one.
But, but there's others that maybe aren't hard to recruit, but they're just vacant. I'm glad to see that you're going to do some analytical work on that.
We're going to look at that. I know between Catherine and Pinky and I, as the budgets come in, inputs come in, and personnel requests, we're going to look at, at all those line items.
And I'm glad to, I have a lot of constituents that use BC Connect. They like it, but they get sometimes a little frustrated with it. So I'm glad to see that you're working on that, and then we'll have metrics. Yeah, that's the next step. So we'll have some metrics about that. So that's great. Any other comments on his report? Yes, sir?
We touched on the broadband issue- We touched on the broadband issue earlier. At our meeting Monday night, we had a group of students from the Will Branch Early College High School.
Yes, which we'll be in contact with them.
Okay. Are we going to communicate with the school district and the county?
That would be my preference, is to work with, through Mr. Rodriguez on that, just to make...
They were charging.
It doesn't exist. I went on the water.
Mr. Glover will ready to start.
Let's go.
I like it.
Yes, let's go.
One minute, okay. Okay. Will you all be able to do that letter to the mayor?
We are.
So right now, we have Landon Jones from USCB. Dr. Panu is not quite here yet, and then we have Dr. Pierce, who is the chairman of the Beaufort Desper Higher Education Commission.
And I'm going to patch it up for 20 minutes while they bring up the communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There's a connector right down there.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I was, I was hoping Dr. Panu would be here. I think we were slotted for 10, so a little bit early, but thank you for allowing us to be here. So what I've got is a short presentation. I wanted to make sure we had enough time for some Q and A sessions. I'm sure you're all going to have questions, and so I'd like to make sure we provide enough time for that.
Could, could you just say your name again for...
Oh, yes, absolutely. My name's Landon Jones. I'm the vice chancellor for finance and operations at USCB. Okay, so looking at the convocation center and the sports park that we have.
Quiver, for here, it takes a minute, so it's a quick one.
Okay.
And we do have one council member online, David Bartholomew, too, so...
Will we try it again? Okay. All right. I apologize for that.
No, sorry.
Okay, so what I want to talk about was the significant regional impact that the convocation and the sports park's going to have to the entire region. So when we look at Phase One, the majority of the facility is going to be around parks and infrastructure. It's going to be a major infrastructure project within the region, and so it'll have a regional impact that allows us to compete south of our region as well, and not just north, because if you look for a large convocation center, you're not going to see anything until you reach Charleston or down in Savannah, so we're primed for, to fill that gap right now, as we are. This will help create a premier destination. This initiative enhances the regionals' ability to attract additional tourism and hospitality by holding concerts, events, things like that within this facility. So it's going to be a really good draw to our region. The project, we did get support through some of our municipal partners, ensuring that we've got strong collaboration with those partners as we move forward in this project. Next slide. So current funding, I know we've talked about this before, but currently we have about $47 million that has been assigned to this project through the state, so we have $47 million ready for the project. And that's just going to be Phase One, and so I'm going to talk about Phase One as we move to the next page. So Phase One really is focusing on the sports park, so that's going to include softball, baseball, track and field. It will also include the convocation center. The seating right now is set at 3,700. We're open and flexible, whether we want to increase that, because we don't feel it's going to be enough, or if we need to decrease that and change the scope of the project a little bit. So we are open to that. We're looking at having graduations there, so we need to make sure that it's got the tunnels and the flow, so you, so that you can hold graduations there. Luckily, my son graduated last year of high school, so I got to see a lot of the inner workings and the flow of how that arena needs to be set up, so that way the students can come in, they can walk the stage, and then when they go to leave, they can receive their certificates. So we can definitely make sure that that facility is set, set for that event, because we'll also hold those events for ourselves. We're looking at concerts, other variety of events, emergency response locations. So currently, USCB for the southern region of Beaufort County is the location for emergency management services. So we get about 300 different individuals from all sorts of agencies coming into USCB. We feed them, we house them, they conduct all their operations to help the county. And so one thing that we think is going to be advantageous with the convocation center there is, we can also allow FEMA to come in who wants to have, who has large operations, and so they could hold those operations out of there. It gives us additional space so that we don't have to fit all of those individuals within small confined spaces roomed together, so we give them a little bit more space by having that convocation center available for them. All right. I'm going to move to the next slide, maybe. Okay, thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about our current operations. Currently, our baseball and softball park is being held in Hardyville, so we have two, two fields. So there is concern, there's safety concerns, when we talk about students having to drive that far for practice every day. So we've got students driving to Hardyville daily, as well as we're holding games there. USCB is responsible for maintaining those two fields, so we are investing a significant amount of money in, or into those fields to maintain those fields. And then we don't actually have priority use, so we can give them our schedule, but if for some reason they have a large event, community event, we lose priority on that. So it is not ideal by any means. When we look at track and field, we're having to go out to local high schools in order to have NCAA Division II track and field meets. And so we're having to work with those different high schools in order to make sure they can facilitate and house us, so that we can hold those events there. And you're talking hundreds and hundreds of people coming to those events. So the location really is just based on the availability of the high school, and we try and do as much forward thought in scheduling as we can, but I certainly understand, things come up, things happen, and so we stay agile with them as much as possible. When we look at basketball, currently it's being held at the Bluffton Recreation Center, which is great, but it holds about 600 spectators, and we fill that up pretty quickly. There's some, some times that we're just not able to fit all of the spectators in there, especially when we're looking at fire code and... when we're looking at fire code and safety. So we want to make sure we're not overdoing it. But most of our games are near maximum capacity at this point. I know others want to attend. We're just not able to have those individuals attend due to the size.
When you say Bluffton, you talking about Buckwalter? No?
No, no, USCAB, the recreation center at USCAB.
The basketball court?
The basketball court, yeah. Okay. Going to roll over to the next page. So this is the ask that we have for Beaufort County Council. So we're requesting a county match of what the state has put in at $47 million. I know previously, there's been discussions where it was at, I think the conversation was $120 million, then $80 million. So I want to make sure we clearly state that we're asking for a match of $47 million of what we have from the state so far. We would like, I would like to ask that you work with the county administrator and the county's bond council to see if there's some alternatives. I know initially, the MTIP was discussed, but I know there are other alternatives that may fit better or align better with this project. USCAB, we will not come back and ask for any additional funding on this project. So if the project is deemed that we need to increase the space, we will go figure out the funding for that. We will not come back to the county court. So we're just asking for a state match of $47 million.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions or comments. Yes, Ms. Tabernick?
So first of all, you talked about you would be happy to host graduations. The school districts made it clear, north of the Broad schools are not going to come down there for graduation. They've all made it clear they won't use your facility. So I'm reiterating what the school district said. And the second question I have is, we just had a big article in the paper about this new facility coming in Pooler. That will be, it's going to be giant compared to this, and it will be a draw for concerts and other things. So how do you fit in with that? And that one's going to come, I think, next year. It's, yeah, I didn't bring the paper with me. Did you all read that?
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, they're going to have a nice, they're going to have all kinds of stuff, and I believe it's coming next year. So how does that impact this?
So when we talk about graduations for the first question, having a space for the rain, inclement weather, having a space available, I think that's going to be extremely important. Yes, I understand the schools want to hold graduation at their football fields. I get it. But we do need an alternative, and this would be a very good alternative due to inclement weather. And then when we look at competition, yes, we understand there's competition to the south, but it's the intent on utilization. So I don't think we fully understand how they intend to utilize that facility. I think there's some additional advantages that defer us from them, especially in the fact that we're able to, you know, have a good space for FEMA or emergency operations to live within there and make space available. So I think from a safety standpoint, I think we have a better opportunity than what Pooler does. And, you know, one of the things that we're looking at doing is we're going to hire an outside firm to come in and manage and schedule and all of that, and it's going to be a pay for performance. So in order for them to get paid, they're going to have to make sure they are filling for concerts and various events. So they're going to have the initiative to go out there and make sure we're filling those with concerts and local events.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Didn't you ask the school board for money as well?
We did not ask the school board for money.
Oh, I thought you did.
They'd be impacted by what we do.
Oh, they would? Okay, I didn't quite understand.
They could be, but...
Yeah.
If there's a facility going in Pooler, that's only 30 minutes from like where I live in the middle of Bluffton, 30 minutes. And it's also next to the airport. So why not just let them do what they're going to do and...
What facility is this?
They're creating...
Ms. Tabernick?
I didn't bring the paper. They're creating a new facility for sports, menus, concerts, skating, all kinds of stuff in Pooler.
We're not aware of that, and that's number one. Number two, I think that one of the conversations that happened, I want to just kind of put a little perspective here. We started this conversation almost six years ago, five, six years ago. And any other conversations that's happening on ever, any facility that sort of, again, I'm not, we're not aware of that. The ones that we were aware of was Bluffton looking at specialized area that would be more for theater, et cetera, but it was not a sports complex. It's not the venue that we are looking at. So I don't know that we are talking about the same thing.
I think that goes back to the utilization. We're going to be utilizing our facility differently than what they intended for.
Councilman Dawson?
Yeah. The thought that there's going to be a convocation center in Pooler, I, and the fact that that would suffice for the residents of Beaufort County, I would take exception to that. For you all who live south of the Broad, it's only like Ms. Brown said, it's only a 30-minute drive, you know, but for the rest of us who live on the far northern end of the county, it's a long drive. Back in my heydays, in my younger days, when we were out partying, we traveled from Biggest State Dale Sheldon to the Savannah Rec Center, not Savannah, what do you call it?
Civic Center.
Civic Center for concerts and things of that nature. And so this is an opportunity where we won't have to travel to Savannah. It'll be just across the bridge in the Bluffton-Ocatee area. So.
Okay, Councilman Glover?
Yes, thank you. And I think, just want to piggyback on Mr. Dawson. He'll have it much easier because he has 95 to get to you, but I still have to go a distance. However, you have in your bullet regional impact, and you have south of the Broad. I wish you would look at how do you, how can you impact north of the Broad as well? Because we are part of this, and if we support it, you know, we want to make sure that you're at least thinking about how can we impact north of the Broad as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and I want to address that. One of the things that particularly USCAB has been dedicated and committed to is the growth of both south and north of the Broad. And we have a Beaufort campus that has grown, that's continuing to grow. There, we have projected programming growth, facility growth in that area, same way for Hilton Head. And so our commitment, please understand, full growth and full engagement is both north and south of the Broad.
Let me just, one of the things that is definitely needed is infrastructure as it relates to transportation. And, you know, you need to be a part of that to, how do you move people from north of the Broad, south of the Broad in a way that will not impact them too much financially and stuff? So those are the kind of thing I'm asking you to look into, to consider, you know, how can north of the Broad benefit from this convocation on this site? That's all.
Totally with you. And again, with regard to that transportation, we've arranged to have students flowing back in.
Sure. Yeah, but I'm looking at citizens as well. And so in your bullet, if you would take out south of Beaufort County and just put offer to Beaufort County?
Yeah.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay.
All right, Councilman Lawson?
No, I think that obviously this is the next step for the university to grow, which has been a big part of not just southern Beaufort County, but all of Beaufort County because there's kids that go to that school. So this being the next step, I mean, I'm in 100% support. However, I don't know where the $47 million comes from. That's the thing that kills us, and that's one-fourth of our complete budget that would, you know, our general fund. So that's our biggest thing. And obviously, the state, it's great that they've given you the $47 million, and they've got a larger budget and larger place to pull money from. We've got a great delegation that has supported you all along the way. So again, I'd love to see how we can make it work. Right now, I just can't grasp, you know, the channels of how that would happen. Yeah.
I had to, oh, go ahead, Councilman Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions if I could. What's the ultimate next step for USCAB? Is it to continue to be a part of the USC program, or is it to take the same path as Coastal Carolina? You know, that question's got to come when we continue to add this type of funding and continue to grow. So if we're going to invest in this, we need to know, what is that next step? And I'm a former grad of USCAB, too, so I'm one of your advocates up here, I promise.
I know, okay. So I think for me to answer that question, it's important to provide the historical context. And I think that's, it's really not going to be a question that is mine to answer, okay? But let me provide a little bit of historical context. USCAB has the potential right now to continue to grow and to have the kind of impact that when we look at, we, an institution such as Coastal, we say, this is, this is a real possibility for this institution, okay? We've grown programming, continued to grow the students, we continue to branch out in terms of impact. We've added honors, we've added graduate programming, and there's a lot more. We're looking at adding engineering program, and all of those things are going to tremendously grow. So from the standpoint of the growth of the institution, we want to continue to grow to be one of, one of the top five comprehensive institutions in the state of South Carolina, okay? So that's the first part of the question. The second one, where history will help us a little bit, is that this community and this body has played a very important role in USCAB being where it is today, and will have to continue to play a very significant role in this trajectory of USCAB's growth. And you look at the transition from two-year to four-year that happened almost 20 years ago. If we did not have the support, both from the leadership within the community and from county and the partnership of the school system, et cetera, we would not have made that particular transition yet. And as a matter of fact, USCAB is the last institution in the state of South Carolina to be allowed to transition from a two- to four-year transition. And it was, again, the community leadership that played a significant role. The similarity would be with Coastal would be the same impact of the communities driving and pushing that made it also possible for them to be able to have that kind of transition and to have the funding that would be dedicated to help that. As a matter of fact, I would love to have council members have a visit of Coastal, just as a vision touchstone.
So I'd like to also add in, we're looking at, as we talk about growth, yes, we talk about growth in student enrollment, but we also have the capital investment. So through the assistance and guidance of the BJA GC, we're looking at adding an additional dorm on Bluffton. We're looking at trying to grow and build dorms. Where can we build those in Beaufort to grow that population? And we've also been approved to start the initiative of how do we get the dorms built out on Hilton Head? So we are actively doing this right now. So we are primed for growth, and we are putting our best foot forward to make sure that that happens. We should be capturing a lot more students, especially as you see them transitioning from the northeast of the US and they're coming south, because the cost of living is higher there, the cost of education is higher there. We are primed here in South Carolina to provide not only that excellent education, but that excellent education for a premium price.
I have, I have, is that your...
I have a couple more if you don't mind.
Sure, and then I have some.
Yeah, it actually encourages me that that is the outlook you're taking, because I don't want to just invest this money then sit status quo for another 30 or 40 years. I would say one thing, and obviously, it's you guys the one going out, reaching for it and asking for the money. I'm a little turned off by the argument of getting kids back and forth from Hardyville and stuff as being a reason for $47 million, because at the same time, when we put a facility in a 3,500 capacity, how am I going to have more traffic for a lot more residents than just the students going back and forth from there? So that argument, I could say, could be a little counterproductive. I see the logic behind it. I see it being better for, you know, practice. I'm all on board with the facility. I'm all on board for the growth of USCAB. I would just say that, one, we need to figure out where to get the $47 million here at the county. And if this next step is to continue to grow the university, has anybody talked about federal dollars to have them reach out and to kick in as well?
Yes, we did. And as a matter of fact, Chairman Passman, you may remember this, that during the COVID era, there was an opportunity for some potential federal funding and for emergency-related utilization and facilities that would make that possible. And we actually went after that. And still, right now, talking with some of our federal representatives on the possibility of supporting that, because especially since through emergency, we have the potential of getting that support. Let me also emphasize, to your point, the goal for the utilization is not just for USCAB. It is truly, in my view, an infrastructure we currently do not have that would serve us, not only enhancing the quality of life, whether we're talking about concerts or trade shows or any of the other activities that currently are there, but even our smaller institutions in the state, you will find that they will typically have this kind of facility, and it's also an asset for the town. I can use USC Aiken as an example, where their particular convocation center was built by the county and turned over to them. And it's a tremendous asset, not only for USC Aiken, but it is so for the county as well, for Aiken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Passman?
Yes, I too am in favor of this. What stands out is the emergency response location. Beaufort County does not have such a facility in case of a hurricane to shelter in place. This would be a Cat 5 building. We could house that many people, so that is very good. As a D2 school, it's growing. We'll need the facility as we continue to grow and expand the programs we have. So this is a multi-use facility. And obviously, the question is the financing. There are various ways we can finance it. It will be up to our administration to work with you to present the alternatives that possibly could be to finance this, whether it's private, public partnerships, whatever. That's, that's the, to me, that's the next step. What you have shown here is the needs and how it will be used as a educational opportunity, not only for your students, but others who want to come and be educated there. So I think it's a great plan.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Councilman Glover?
No, I just want to piggyback on both Passman and Lawson and Cunningham comments about funding. I do support the project. I've supported it from day one. I thought it is a good economic drive. And when I look at your Phase 1 map here, I see the line of Jasper County there. So as we talk about how to refund, I'm hoping that a part of that discussion is how can we bring municipalities like Hardyville or the town of, I mean, the county of Jasper in this as well?
Yes.
Yes.
So looking at different various funding source, Hardyville seems to me to be the greatest recipient of this impact versus Beaufort County. So they should be in some skin in the game. So that's my comment.
No, thank you for the comment. And please, you do know that when the, the part of the driving mechanism and driving force for exploring the funding mechanism, when the initial committee that was put together looked at and engaging and even talking about MCIP was precisely the ability to engage both Beaufort and Jasper County, as well as the municipalities at the table. So that, please know that that's, that's the case, and we are going to continue to do that. But our biggest partner, from the get-go, when we first started this particular conversation years ago, has been Beaufort County. And all of Phase One, by the way, is physically on the part of the land that is on Beaufort County.
I have a couple of questions. I know you're familiar with Columbus State University. When they built their, excuse me, when they built their, when they built their baseball field, Burger King?
This is Maryland?
No, Georgia.
Oh, Columbus State?
Columbus State University, yeah. When they built their Burger King franchise, built their baseball field and, and facility. What have you done to date for naming? I know TCL, when they built the Culinary Institute, they had a lot of sponsors even before they came to the county for support for that. Have, have you gotten any franchise sponsors or anyone yet to help name some of these facilities?
So that's one of the questions, by the way, that we got as a follow-up from, from the presentation that we'd made in May. And it was one of the questions on staff's counsel. And while we know and have identified potential places, we have not engaged in any conversations because without the assurances of the real feasibility of this project, knowing, hey, look, we are, we are in a secure place with regard to the primary funding, the naming opportunities engagement is premature, and it's not taken as seriously.
And what's the total estimate?
Okay, so if, and I know we've, we haven't specifically agreed with the, with regard to the funding mechanism, but if county approves $47 million, whichever mechanism we end up choosing to do that, together with the $47 million that we have from the state, at $94 million, we feel like for under $100 million, we will be able to get going with Phase One.
Build the entire facility?
Phase One, which includes the arena, baseball, softball field, and track and field. Yes. And so these are our current estimate, but now just remember one thing.
It goes up.
Yes. The timeliness becomes so critical. And part of what allows us to be able to say, for a little under $100 million, we can now get going, is that we've had to trim a little bit on the size of, of the convocation, from talking about 4,000 to maybe 3,700, and still be able to kind of be in a range that we, that we need to be in. Yes.
So let's say it comes to where it's starting to go over $100 million, and we've already put 47 million in. Obviously, there's going to be a lack of funding source. You're going to go out somewhere to get it. You say you're not coming back to us. But would you guys be willing to give the guarantee that you would drop the other things from being built to make sure that the arena's built? Because let's be real, the only thing that benefits the county on the county side is the arena more than anything else. That's the only thing that brings tax revenue back to us. Gives us an opportunity for shelters, or honestly, I don't even really agree with the graduation thing. I think spending $47 million for something that happens once a year is crazy to even consider. But if we say that's the number one thing that we're really interested in.
Uh-oh, what was that?
Wouldn't you? Don't blame me on that one.
I, I.
Is that something that you guys would be able to say, okay, we know that the arena's the most important thing, so softball, baseball, it's going to have to wait. We have to find another funding source for those? Or is this an all-in project?
I think we can engage in that conversation. We, we profit in matter by being combined, whatever.
Right. Which I agree with.
But at the same time, your point is well taken. And please know, by the way, that, that we are already reaching out to municipalities for.
Do you guys have any private donors or big donors or anything like that?
We do have potentials for private donors, yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I'm going to, in addition to Madam Chair's comments, reach out to people like Chase Schwab, those type of people, to put their name on it, because you get a lot of money from, from private.
We do intend to.
Oh, you have? You have or going to?
We're, we're going to. So once we can get an assurance, and when we go out to these different companies and we're asking for sponsorship, you know, they want to invest time and effort and support into a project they know is going to be fully funded and built. So once we can get the backing and the support of Beaufort County Council, then that's when we can go have those serious conversations with them to get that, that sponsorship.
A process list includes four or five different entities already.
Okay, all right.
So please know that there is a council list that we've already identified. We can go after this.
Okay. And as you know, this is a workshop, so no, no votes, no decisions, anything like that. Is there, is there any other further comments or?
Yeah, good luck to Pinky trying to figure that one out.
Okay, could I please make a request? Part of our, our request, even in just conversation with staff, they need council to be able to give them permission to engage in this effort. We, we have bond council that we feel like, together with county bond council, and even the school system bond council, I just met with the chairman and the vice-chairman for the school system, how, how can we now explore a mechanism that holds the school harmless, and at the same time allows us to be able to, in relatively short order, really get to the decision point? Because my, one of my primary concerns is the escalating cost that just accumulates.
Madam Chair, a question. Is that something we could put on the finance committee for discussion and then have conversations about that to direct staff?
I think we.
Mark's committee?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I think we can, that would be my recommendation, is we at least put on a committee, so you all can review it, and then we can get it, get a vote on that and get it moved forward. There may also be some option for us, and I'd have to ask Dr. Penu, if council didn't want to commit full 47 million, could we look at something less to commit? And those are also options that you could direct us to go and look at. But I would prefer to get some direction at, at least at committee.
Okay.
Prior to us going forward, so that I'm clear on where you all stand on this issue.
Okay, all right. And Chairman?
Councilman more question?
Yes.
Is there a reason you can't go out for a vote to the public? Because if, whatever council does is public money. And we would be doing that without the public voting. So like, the school district does a referendum, we do a referendum. Is, is there any reason you can't do a referendum?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's within the school district to do a referendum. That's, that's one of, within their particular structure. It is not within universities pervia to be able to do those kinds of things. So it's, again, one of those, it's a limitation that's there, that it's, it's not an option typically for us.
Councilman Bartholomew, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I think they answered everything.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll, I'll let Chairman Lawson, Finance Committee.
The meeting is on Monday, so we could add this as an item for discussion.
Will Ms. Harriet be ready by Monday?
Well, we want to hear what you all want us to do, and get direction to consider options. And I know Ms. Harriet is very good at that, but before we spend time and effort and resource, I want to have a clear direction from council.
Okay.
Especially as to the amount, if you want to consider the full amount or something else.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
And, and I think many of our potential options, including a combinations of an amount with an increase in mileage rate, that would allow, so there are a number of things I believe that could be explored.
Right, there are multiple options we could consider.
And that's what we could talk about at Finance Committee.
Yes, at least initially.
In addition, Ms. Harriet, you have a comment?
Yeah, since Finance Committee is Monday, I don't think I'll have the time to explore very many options. So if possible.
Again, I think the idea would be, we would get direction.
Right.
From the committee to go and explore.
Not, and not look at options, just direction.
Right.
Correct. That's what I'm looking for.
And maybe present in January when committees come back.
Back in January, then we could give more, you would be better.
Right.
Ready to give us options.
Right.
Okay, sounds, we got it.
Let me ask Dr. Penu, how soon did you need to know the direction from this council?
Two years ago?
Yeah, yeah. Honestly, and the cost escalation is such a huge factor. It plays a really, really critical role. We, we, we had approached, a while ago, county for starting the design work. And we, we had like a shared commitment to be able to say, if we can get 300,000, and we include our own 300,000, we can get started with the design work. Honestly, I would like for us to be able to start the design work by January.
The RFP is, the RFP for that design work is already out. So we are trying to move forward as soon as we can.
Do we have a cost estimate, what are you looking for, at least for design?
Pardon me?
A cost estimate on the design portion, is it 10% of?
We had an estimate of about 600,000 at that point. Yeah. It may have gone up again.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, council, you did approve a $300,000 contribution for A&E Design in fiscal year 2023.
Right.
Correct.
And they already have those funds.
And those funds are there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again.
Mike, could we just add that discussion to Monday's Finance?
We will have that done and add to the agenda.
I mean, I don't, we're going to discuss that Finance. We just discussed it, but without options, I see no point in having a discussion. What, we don't have any options. So I'm not going to direct Pinky what to go investigate. I don't understand what we're doing here.
So my question is, does council want administration to go look for 47 million dollars? What are the options?
Yeah, that's.
That's what I need to know. It's because otherwise, if I don't have direction, then we're going to spend time and effort to come up with, find ways to get 47 million that council may not support this project, or may support a lesser amount.
Or it should go to council, not Finance Committee.
We could do that, too. That's another option.
Yeah. Why would it go to Finance and then?
Finance Committee and then council. But you start getting the direction from the Finance Committee, and you start discussing, do you want to fund the full amount or something less, or consider all the options?
And it's just a discussion. We're not.
Yeah, but that's only Finance Committee. So if there's only five people there or six, you're making a decision for full council. It should go to full council.
Yes, you would start the discussion at Finance Committee, then at the end, December 8th, council.
It's not going to help Dr. Penu.
But you'll start to get a feel for what council wants at the Finance Committee.
That didn't work the last time. Just point that out. Okay, whatever you want to do.
Okay, all right.
Because we just overturned.
Madam Chairman, I do not have a problem either way. I can give you my vote right down.
No, we can't do that.
I understand that. I'm just telling you.
Oh, my God.
Can't do that. All right.
Okay.
Ms. Pinky, are we ready for the next presentation?
Are you all good with USCB?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for them?
No, we're good.
All right, Sheriff Tanner's here for his next presentation.
All right.
Y'all ready for me?
Yes, sir.
You ready for us?
We were nice to him.
Well, I know you're nice to him.
I'm not going to guarantee the same for you.
You know, I wouldn't expect anything different.
No, we'll be fine. We'll be fine. You go.
Okay. We're, we're talking about the helicopter. And just to bring you back in time a little bit, I think, I think it's important, and this is not an insult or anything, but I think it's important that we go back and we kind of figure out how we, how we've arrived to where we're at today. Now, on the 20th, I believe it was the 20th of October, Colonel Baxley was here, talking about the helicopter. I know my chief deputy was here as well. And I was not available at that time, so I took the opportunity to watch the meeting later that day or first thing the next morning. And Todd, I called you shortly thereafter. And I was, I was kind of, I was kind of mystified as to how this conversation was taking place. And it was obvious to me, based on the reaction of council, that y'all were clueless about this lease-to-own helicopter program. And I found that to be a little bit concerning because when I met, and I know amnesia is, hopefully, it's not, you know, forever, but and I, and Mike, I hope you and Pinky recover fully. But these conversations about the lease-to-own was actually recommended by Mike Moore, and supported Pinky by you, because we had a CIP meeting, I think it was in January. And we said, you know, we put this on the CIP, what's the best way to fund it? And, and Mike, we agree. We agree with you and Pinky both that funding this helicopter, because of the cost of a helicopter, is probably the easiest thing to do is a lease-to-own. And I still agree with you. And hopefully, you do as well. And, you know, and that conversation really never took place on the 20th. So I'm glad we're here today talking about it. And Colonel Baxley's on leave, and I'm, I was not going to call him in because he works his butt off. And, you know, he's on leave, and I'm just going to let him have his time off. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the helicopter program, but I'm going to talk about it a little bit different. And to take you back in time as well, when I, when Colonel Baxley came to me two years ago to talk about a helicopter, there were several things we talked about. One, a replacement for the 55-year-old helicopter we fly today, and where are we going to store it? And what size can we get? And all those factors, because we are currently using the old fire department out by the airport. And when I say old, it's old, like most buildings in Beaufort County that, that we utilize at the county level. I mean, we have a lot of old construction, a lot of old buildings that we use. But the benefit for us using the old fire department is that it gives us two bays, kind of like two garages for ladies. I don't know if you know what a bay is, but in this particular thing, it's like a garage. So in the OH-58, which is similar to mosquito control and things that we've done over the years, but we've talked about it, and we've never really advanced that forward, which we understand a lot going on in Beaufort County. So when Neil started talking about the helicopter, we started talking about, okay, do we want a Ford Ranger? Do we want an F-150 four-wheel drive capable of going anywhere and doing everything? Or do we want an F-250 long bed that's really not good for anything except for maybe a long-distance travel? So the reality, too, is the OH-58, which is the current helicopter we fly, is that Ford Ranger. It can do a little bit, but it can't do everything it needed to do. And we don't need to do more than go into a larger, like a Huey and stuff like that. We don't need that platform. So we started looking at it. One of the concerns that Neil had, which, which we looked at the Bell 407, which is a four-blade helicopter, which is capable of doing everything in law enforcement, to include the same capabilities for air ambulance. So it has all of that. It is rated as the best public safety platform when it comes to a rotor blade machine like a helicopter. The OH-58, again, is a two-blade. Doesn't have a lot of horsepower. It's a platform. We can't deploy personnel out of it. We can't extract someone from a rooftop or, you know, or, you know, in a boating accident. The OH-58, again, is a two-blade, doesn't have a lot of horsepower, it's a platform, we can't deploy personnel out of it, we can't extract someone from a rooftop or, you know, or, you know, in a boating accident and those type things. It can only carry about twelve cases of water, to include the pilot and the copilot, and we've experienced that when we were helping with, with issues in South Carolina. So it's a great package, and that would be the Bell 505. So the OH-58, and I know you're not going to remember this, and I'll be glad to provide information later, but the OH-58, a two-blade helicopter, is only good as a platform. So it gives us the ability to fly, look for lost children, lost people, patrol the county, because our state law says that the sheriff and his deputies has to patrol the entire county, and that's nine hundred and twenty-three square miles of land, water, and air. So the benefit to the helicopter is it can patrol the entire county to include the thousands of acres that the county owns, and it can do it in a few hours. And we are, we are an island, or a county of islands. So we're looking at a platform that actually benefits not only law enforcement, but also if we have a situation where, similar to what happened in western North Carolina with Hurricane Helene. And my question to Neil was, what helicopters were used in those rescue missions in western North Carolina? Because he went up, he spent a week up there, not with our helicopter, he went up on his own time to see the devastation and to learn from it, similar to what he did many years ago in Louisiana and down in New Orleans. So we find that the Bell 407 was the helicopter that was utilized, not only in western North Carolina, but also in New Orleans. And a good friend of mine, who was the sheriff in Tennessee, he was also a pilot, and he flew the 407 himself and rescued folks down in New Orleans off of rooftops, and I think you can remember all the video of all those rescues. So when we look at the 505, which is kind of a newer version of the OH-58, it gives us basically the same thing the OH-58 gives us, it's just a newer version, because our current helicopter is a nineteen seventy-one model. So, you know, things have changed a little bit since then. It has, of course, it still is two-blade, the horsepower of the helicopter, we don't have capability of lifting things, we don't have the capability of extracting someone from a rooftop or, or a boating accident or a barrier island. We can pick them up, but we can't do anything other than pick them up and move them a short distance and set them right back down. So it has no bucket capability, so we cannot deploy from the air, we can't even speed rope, fast rope out of it, because it's just not the right platform for it. So we looked at the 505, and we said, okay, well, Neil was, at the time, looking at what we were utilizing in the form of a hangar, the only thing that we could make work was the two-blade 505. I go back to aligning the blades and pushing the helicopter into its bait. Since then, we have found out that the 407 has a kit, it's a blade kit, that allows the blades to fold. So where it's a four-blade helicopter, you take it into a hangar scenario like we have that we're currently using, you can actually fold the blades in to where it looks like a two-blade, and then once you take it out, you do the exact reversal to that. The four-blade has better counter rotation, so helicopter, you know, you fly in a helicopter, in a two-bladed helicopter, and Michael knows this from his time in the, in the service, you fly in a two-bladed helicopter, and when the engine stops, you drop like a rock. There's no counter rotation. So with a four-blade, it does have the counter rotation, and it also has the autopilot. And it's capable of actually not only carrying supplies and needed resources to certain areas, but it has the ability to have a bucket for extraction. And when I say a bucket for extraction, it's the same thing as the Coast Guard. You drop a bucket, you can drop a person with it, and then you can extract both of them at the same time. You can bring them up in the helicopter. It has better capabilities of flying in adverse weather conditions, where the 40, I mean, the 505 and OH-58, really you don't want to be in the air if you've got a lot of wind, if you've got hurricane conditions and those type things. So my instruction to Neil a few days ago, and I reinforced it again last night, is that we need a ceiling. And I think the ceiling that's been discussed, Mike, with the 505 was four million dollars. Is that about right? So, and we felt like that four million dollar ceiling would get us a new 505. But when I look back on looking at what the 505 represents, which is a great helicopter, don't get me wrong, I mean, it's a phenomenal aircraft, but it's not designed for what we need it for, not for today or for the future. As you well know, I've just said, it's fifty-five years old, so it's only got sixty-six hundred hours on the OH-58. That's nothing. Helicopters' time in service is based on hours, it's not based on years. If you've got the right mechanic, if you've got the right service, if you've got the right pilot, that's not over aggressive and doing ridiculous stuff, which Neil is not that guy. Mike, you've flown with him, you kind of know he's very particular about what he does.
I agree with that.
And, yeah. And matter of fact, I tease him a lot, because he just, he won't get low enough when I, when I need him to get lower, but he's scared of the top of a pine tree, which if I was in his position, I would be, too. But, you know, we just, we look at the 505 comparison to 407, and then I told Neil, because I researched this myself last night and earlier today, there are a lot of opportunities for us to buy a used 407. And a lot of the 407s that are out there do not have the kit that allows the rotor blades, you know, to be tucked. But that's a twenty-six thousand dollar kit. So instead of looking at the 505, which is two blades and we can tuck into a hangar, we actually need to be looking at the 407, put the kit on it, fold the blades, put it in the hangar, and then still have the same ability to do what we do with a traditional 407. But we don't need to buy a brand-new six million dollar Bell 407. We need a window, or a ceiling, if you will, of what we need to look at, and I think that in my research and the discussions with Neil, we can find a used 407, Bell 407, for less than three million dollars. The original price, you know, everyone drives a used car?
Yeah.
Well, it's the same concept. You buy a car, you drive it off a lot, you turn around and take it back, it's a used car, you're not going to get what you paid for it. Well, why are we buying a brand-new helicopter? It's, we don't need to buy a six million dollar helicopter, we need to buy the right helicopter, which is the Bell 407, at a used price with low hours. And all the ones that I looked at briefly this morning was the Bell 407, average hours for, and this was like two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, there's a variety of helicopters out there. And the average hours that I, that I saw was two thousand. And, and a helicopter will last until it needs to be overhauled between twenty and thirty thousand hours. Just to give you a little bit of concept of what that is, Neil has been flying our helicopter for eight years. And since he started flying the helicopter, he has logged less than a thousand hours. Eight years, less than a thousand hours. Six hundred and sixty-one missions have been flown during that eight-year period, less than a thousand hours. So that kind of gives you an indication how long a helicopter can be in service. If twenty to thirty thousand hours is your window for an overhaul, if you will, and that's the overhaul which has a price tag to it, I mean, we're looking at, based on our hours that we fly right now, we're looking at, I don't know, eighty years, that this helicopter can be in use. So it determines on how much you fly. So if we find one that's got, say, two thousand hours on it, there is, at the bottom number, there's eighteen thousand hours left before we even start talking about an overhaul. And the average overhaul is twenty-five thousand hours. So you're talking about a long time that a helicopter is going to be used, and if we get it at the right price and we buy one that's, that's, I mean, we're not going to buy a piece of junk, because let me tell you, the FAA and the regulations on these helicopters are very, very strict. So we're, we know, and I've also asked Neil to work with Bell, of course, the dealer that would sell us a brand-new one, to help us find that used helicopter that will service what we need, and get it at a price of a used price instead of a brand-new cost. So if we do that, and we find our ceiling is at four million, million, and I think it should stay there, even though the cost of the helicopter is going to be a lot less, it may give us an opportunity to work with Mike and, and the airport, and look at maybe adding an additional hangar to the Ladies Island Airport. But by far, the Bell 407 is the appropriate helicopter that we need to invest in. And there was no reason to make an investment into a 505, because it's only going to give us what we currently have, which is nothing but a platform. We need to be more advanced and be in a position that we can work with county EMS, or we could, we could do the things that need to be done, even though it's not something that, you know, we don't get in shootouts every day, but we've got plenty of guns, okay? So, but in a scenario like with a helicopter, you have to be prepared for worst-case scenario. And we know, we know what Helene did to western North Carolina, and we know just how valuable those helicopters were that were deployed there. So we just need to look and do the right thing. But I think we can, we can, we can meet the mark and probably advance some of the other things that need to be advanced as well, like the hangar and some other stuff, by just finding the right used helicopter. I don't care about the year, doesn't bother me about the year, we're looking at the hours, so.
And we have, David asked, asked that he go first with questions, if that's okay. Are you ready?
That's fine.
Okay, David?
Hey, morning, Sheriff Tanner. Morning. I've got a, got a few questions for you here, and let me preface, I have no issue you getting a new helicopter, but I want to make sure that we explored every option here. What was the issue with the ten thirty-three exchange program?
There's no issue with ten thirty-three, the problem with ten thirty-three is that they do not have any helicopters.
Okay.
And they do not have parts for the OH-58. We have a parts, I think Neil told you all, he has scavenged
Right, yeah.
parts over the past years, just for the OH-58. So we do have a small parts room that we can get stuff from, but we just don't have any, there's no, nothing available in ten thirty-three with the appropriate aircraft. You mean, there's OH-58s are a dime a dozen. I mean, they're a training helicopter, that's what the helicopter is actually designed for, it's designed to take a tourist for a ride, or you, to get your helicopter license, and it's, it's a small platform. Great, it's a great helicopter, but it's just not serviceable for what we need.
And then my other question goes into the funding. Has your office explored grants through DHS, FEMA, Homeland Security Grant Program, DOJ, FAA, et cetera?
Yeah, Neil has, he has looked at everything, and even your bank account, to see if we can get money from you, so, I mean, he has looked, he has looked at every option.
Do y'all have the denial letters on that, or have y'all applied for them?
Pardon?
Have y'all applied for any of those grants and had the denial?
I would, I would need to ask Neil.
Okay. And last thing, if we get the new platform for the Bell 407, what training or endorsements would Neil or any other pilot have to do on the new platform, as well as for the bucket recovery missions?
Well, I mean.
What's the cost on that training?
Yeah, for Neil to go from OH-58 into a Bell 407, that would require him about four days of training, so thirty-two hours, thirty-two to forty hours.
Okay, and with that, what about the rescue mission recovery?
I mean, there are different concepts on that, we can either send folks out for training, or we can actually bring training local. I'm one of those guys that believe that we bring, we bring training to Beaufort County. I can train more people by bringing them here than sending folks out for training.
No, I understand, do we know the cost associated with that beyond the?
I mean, that is a great question for Neil, and I'm sure he knows the answer, but that's, that's not something that I spoke to him about.
I understand, that's all I had, thank you.
All right, Counsel, passment?
Yes, you already kind of answered one question of mine. I absolutely agree with you, we have to have the right helicopter. Question number one is, the two that we have, we're going to replace one of them. Would the program say, well, if you're going to replace one, we're going to take back both of them?
No, we can, we can, we can, I mean, we can keep both of them, which we don't need, but I think we need to keep the best out of the two that we have, because when, when service is required for, say, the Bell 407, we have to transport that and have it serviced, and it's down for a few days, which can, which, having OH-58, the best of the one that we have, to have it also in the hangar for a backup is, is important.
Okay.
Plus, we have parts that can keep that OH-58 flying a little while longer, so it's always good to have a backup.
And you, you addressed the hangar issue, because we did approve increasing the hangar space at Ladies Island.
Yes, sir.
And it would seem, like you said, if we have the right amount of money and you get it for less money, we can expend some more money from that to build the appropriate hangar for that, and then maybe we don't need the twenty-six thousand dollar kit, maybe the hangar is designed to put the plane right, put the helicopter right in there.
And I agree with you on that, because, you know, if we had a hangar that was, was built so that we could actually take a four-blade helicopter in or out of it, then we would, definitely would not need the kit.
Right, and the eventuality is replacing the other one with the same one we need.
And, you know, and the 407 also has an upgrade, and again, if we buy something that's used, and it's in great shape with low hours, some of the upgrades that we need to look at in that are the carbon fiber rotors, they never have to be replaced, they're forever. And, I mean, those are things that are cost savings down the road, because rotor replacement's expensive. And so, but you know, the 407, efficiency-wise, it's very efficient, it's not, I mean, it's not a race car in the sky, it's a, it's a F-150 four-wheel-drive truck that can go anywhere and do anything and deploy and, and recover anything we need to do. It's not something we don't need, we don't need a Huey, we don't need that, because even though we can carry a dozen people somewhere, it is a maintenance nightmare, it's, it's not cost-effective, and it's not something we need. The 505 is kind of like the Huey, we're in between, the 505 is great, but it's just not going to service what we need, and so that's why we looked at the 407.
And did you say you're in favor of outright purchase rather than lease to purchase?
You know, and honestly, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, and, because every, every, all of these things can be financed, we can, you can pay a million dollars down and finance the rest, or you could pay it all down at one time, or you can finance the whole package. I mean, it's kind, honestly, it's kind of like going to buy a car, you just figure out what you want to do, how much you're going to put down and how much you want to finance. But, I mean, they're financing by month, they're financing by year, so there are plenty of options out there. Now, Bell has, they have several options on their table, but those options are, a lot of those options are for new purchase. So now we're looking at more of the used, and we not, we may not be buying the helicopter from Bell, we may be buying it from someone else. So we need to be prepared to look at what options are there, but financing it is definitely an option, correct? So.
Okay, any other questions from Counsel? Yes, sir.
And, yeah, thank you, Sheriff Tanner, for coming in today, and I, you do a great job, and obviously you've got our support. I think the biggest thing that came up was the fact that this wasn't requested in your budget in, in June, and, you know, why wasn't it coming up next year? So that's the surprise.
Yeah, well, that's, that's where we differ, I mean, the CIP budget was approved by y'all, which had in there five hundred thousand dollar leased own for the helicopter, was approved by Counsel. So that's why I was concerned about, we're having a discussion about something that, that we started talking about January of twenty twenty-five, and came to y'all in June and passed through the budget process as a CIP, you know, payment. I mean, again, it was, our discussions with Mike and Pinky is that it's five hundred thousand dollars a year, and this was going to be a CIP payment. And I think that we originally. And I think that we originally negotiated $4 million, so.
If I may, and the sheriff had me worried about that diagnosis of a...
Well, I mean, I'm expecting.
Because I hear that at home, so, you know, I got to go get the VA to check me out. It's probably service-connected for my 4,000 hours.
This is not a HIPAA violation either.
No. But any case, yes, we did talk about the 500,000. I think the issue was when we reviewed the contract language, it, it asked for a commitment from the governing body, which in the form of resolution, because that would commit council to fund this every year in the CIP, and that binds the future council. So that's why, the main reason we wanted to bring this back to you all. I agree with the sheriff, we did fund the 500,000, but when we looked at the contract that, that Bell had put forth, that, that's when we brought this back.
So I mean, I, when you say that, that, that makes it sound like that we could have $500,000 in your budget and we could either do a lease purchase or a, a, a loan, and that $500,000 would be additional to your budget for the next five, 10 years until it, it's either paid off or the lease ends.
And it doesn't have to be 500. I mean, it depends on, if we buy a helicopter that's 2.5 million, I mean, we can, we can finance as long as we want to finance it. I mean, it, but it depends, again, it depends on who we're using as our, in, in the form of finance. If we're not buying it directly from Bell, who has a financing program, and we're buying it from someone else, then, you know, we're going to have to figure out the best-case scenario. There's just no question about it. I mean, this is a, this is a large sum of money. It's kind of like the fire chief coming to y'all and wanting a ladder truck. A ladder truck is 1.5 million dollars, and a ladder truck lasts 10 years. So, you know, you can buy multiple ladder trucks for what I'm asking for, and this helicopter can last 80 years, and a ladder truck's going to get you 10. So all of these, all of these tools that we use, not only in a fire and EMS, but in law enforcement, unfortunately, some of the tools that we use have a pretty hefty price tag because of what they're intended to do. So, I mean, I, I get it, this is a huge cost, and it's a concerning cost to me as well. But at the, in the long run, Mark, you know this, in the long run, you're better off just paying for it. You, you're saving a lot of money in finance costs, depending on what your conditions are, and Pinky knows this better than anyone, but if we have the money and have the ability to do it, if we could do it where we could work it out, where we finance it and you pay half the first year, and we budget for the, you know, the residual amount and pay it off next year, then, I mean, there's multiple ways to do it. But we just need to, my, my point, in working with Neil on this and asking Beaufort County citizens for money, is we need to purchase the appropriate item, the appropriate tool to get the job done.
Let me just finish up then, and I, I agree with you. I mean, obviously, you know the helicopters like you know guns, you're going to purchase what's correct. So that's something that, for us, I think we're all for, you buying what you need. I, I think where this whole thing happened was, we as a council had a knee-jerk reaction when we saw, I think, three and a half million dollars or whatever that was, and it came through thinking, wait a minute, this is a new purchase.
I understand.
But it ma, it makes sense that it, it would be spread out over years or if it's something that you, you did plan for and met with staff on. So, so again, I think that clarifies a lot of things.
It's, it, it shouldn't concern you either because, again, if you do it through the CIP and, and you, and you pay for it that way, you're not increasing my budget, if you will. Okay? And I know there, there are deep concerns about budget increases because once you give me the increase, you can't take it away.
Yeah, we're going to quote you on that.
Yeah, well, you know, and I know, I know our dear solicitor feels the same way. Once you give you money, I mean, you can't take it back, so. But, you know, I, I think there are really, there are plenty of options to do this, and, and, and I honestly would, would help from Pinky and Mike and, and for Neil doing all of his legwork he needs to do, because you, Neil is a stickler. He, he is, he is anal when it comes to this kind of stuff. And so I, I know he's going to, whatever decision he makes in the form, because he's the pilot, not I, whatever decisions he makes in the form of, of what we need in Beaufort County, I trust he'll make the right decision. And then we just need to make the right decision on finance.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And I was just going to say, we'll continue to have discussions with sheriff. If, if he's got different options, we're happy to, to look at all of that and come up with options to finance.
Okay.
To include, it could be a one-time appropriation for the amount that the sheriff needs for the helicopter.
That's what Pinky.
Ms. Harriet, you want to speak too?
Just pinky. I haven't been diagnosed with amnesia either. We did have this request in the CIP for fiscal year '26, but at the time, we did not have the full Bell lease agreement. So we did not know that it was going to be. And I think the biggest concern is booking a liability for the term of the lease. I prefer not to do that, like he said, finance costs, interest, all that, I'd rather not do that. We do have other options if council approves the purchase, we can move forward with whichever model. I don't know any of that, I'm just going to leave that up to you and Neil, but whatever you decide, we can fund the purchase, but it would be a one-time purchase. It would not be, I would not recommend to council to do the lease agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
So I'm glad to hear that you are looking at a used one, because the six million kind of escalated for me. I did see the $500,000 lease in the CIP. It was there, we saw it, we talked about it. My mistake is, I didn't ask how many years the lease was for.
Right, and, and this is a capital purchase agreement.
Correct.
Which is what the, the Bell had.
It was the lease to buy, yeah.
Correct. So as Pinky points out, we had to book the liability as part of that. So the funds just need to be appropriated by council.
So I didn't, I wasn't as shocked when Colonel Baxley stood up because I knew that was in there. I would prefer to buy, as Ms. Harriet says, rather than book it, so.
Counselman Cunningham?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of different questions. I'm all on board for just buying it outright and being done with it. So I guess a couple logistic questions for us on council to process this and get this done properly. There are, part of the request you were discussing was the extra money since we already talked about the 4 million to go towards the hangar. One, do we need to do that as a separate resolution since that's not going towards a purchase of a helicopter, but actually going to upgrades of a building? So I know you said keep the threshold the same, but should that actually be split and bifurcated to two different items?
I think it's two different requests altogether.
Oh, yeah, two, agree.
Yeah, one is for the purchase of a helicopter, and then the other one will be for renovation to the.
Because that's an enterprise.
Enterprise, yeah.
What kind of timeframe will we look at to see what's that actually going to cost if we're going to need the upgrade kit or not? Like the, type of the timeframe to expand the Ladies Island hangar?
You know, I think we've done some work on that over the years, but I know that it's been a few minutes, so we probably need to go back and redo it because everything has a cost increase. I mean, I am comfortable with the helicopter if we could have this conversation again after the first of the year, because when I, when I ask, when I ask Neil to vet, and he's already, he's already doing it, even though he's off, he's going to find the right helicopter, but I don't want to say we'll find it next week. I think that we'll have it after the first of the year, and there's a lot of competition out there. So hangar, I, I know Neil has information and Mark Rosino has information about the hangar, and that's something that I would need to ask more detail about. So, but we can bring all of this back to you, say, first of January, after we get through the holidays, we can have all this as a package, and we can actually separate that package with hangar and helicopter and the cost associated with both. And then you treat it as a separate package, it's fine.
That just makes sense to me, and honestly, I'd rather do it that way because I'm not sure what the timeframe is of reopening those blades in a helicopter if we need to get in the air quickly. Another question about the ones we have, what, I asked this question in the committee, but I can't remember. How much are we paying for those currently a year?
We don't, those are, those belong to the federal government.
Right, so we get to use them for free, right?
We do not own them, and when, when we're done with them, we have to take them back to Kentucky.
So, for the possibility of using it for other things, I know Neil was talking about how we use it in other counties, we use the, we help out in search and rescues, stuff like that. Is it possible to still keep both planes in case we do run into an emergency of another Matthew or what happened in North Carolina, that we can actually service them out to other people? I mean, since we have them, or?
I mean, we can keep both of them as long as we're using them and as long as we need them. So we have an agreement, a contract with the federal government to do that, but we cannot share them, we can't allow Jasper to come in and use them.
Right, right. I mean, I was going to say keep them on hand in case, well, he was saying he goes and flies out there.
We can keep both of them.
I, I'd honestly prefer to do it if it's not, we already have them. If we run into a need where we can use them and we have other pilots that can come in.
Well, we have other pilots that share us.
I mean, that makes more sense to me if we're not being charged to keep them, we already have the parts. And we have a place to store them already.
We're not, it's not costing us much to utilize the old fire department, a little bit of electricity, and, you know, so, and a little bit of roof repair of now and then. So there's not really a cost to it. You know, Neil's done a good job of creating an environment in the old fire department to, to house both of these helicopters, and, and, and they're there. It's just, and they can stay there.
Yeah, especially if we're talking about putting the other one at Ladies Island, it just.
Well, it's a short, short distance, walking distance to the airport.
And just, it just makes sense to me.
Because the fire station we use is right at the end of the runway.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Pinky, I mean, I don't know the process of it. I know we've already approved 500,000, so I don't know if 500,000 is the holder and then we find the other 2.5 or how that goes. I mean, I'm on board to figure out how to get it done.
Right, I think the sheriff's going to give us some more, or Neil's going to give us some options of what they want, and I think they'll probably just present, and at that point, we can.
In January, probably.
And let, let me say this too, that when, when we first started talking about the helicopter program, I told Neil just to hold off on it, that I wasn't comfortable at the time for us moving forward. But what we did is we, we, we put in a $500,000 NCIP for the replacement of the FLIR that we have on the helicopter we currently have now, which is 20 years old. That's a $500,000 piece of equipment. And what we decided, Mike, if you remember what we decided, is that we're buying a FLIR for 500,000 to put in a 1971 helicopter. Why don't we just make the investment in a new helicopter that's already going to have a FLIR? And that's how we got to that 5, the 500,000 number was chosen for a FLIR replacement. We just converted that over, you know, to a payment. So, but it's unfortunate, but that, some of that equipment is very, very expensive, but you can't operate without it.
Okay, is there any further comments? Yes, Kent.
Just want to make a comment. In light of everything that had happened in the last month or so, Sheriff, I'm glad you're here, because in that time period, you're looking at upgrading the services of a helicopter. And so for that, I think it adds to a rescue mission if needed. And so I'm glad of everything that happened, but we are in a better position right now to move forward to a better service. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming today, and also, I mean, we're a county of islands, as you pointed out, and if there's anybody in the state that needs this, it's Beaufort County.
Well, our population is booming, and, of course, our recreational boaters and campers and all the stuff that is going on. I mean, this really, I think Donna OMB would be very happy to have, and, because this, this Bell 407 is the same helicopter that they use for air ambulance service. So it has that capability to put a stretcher in there, an EMT, and all the other staff. But we can also deploy, not only can we deploy a K-9, a Bloodhound, or the Fuscu for a search and rescue, but we, I mean, there's so much more we can do with it that we can't do with OH-58. So the, the best thing about this is we're going to be able to buy a used, very low-hour Bell 407 for half the price, or maybe even less than half the price, that we could buy a brand-new 407. And so it's, it's a win-win all the way around.
Okay, thank you very much for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you all, good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is affordable housing.
I wasn't ready to go till 11:30, so can we take a break?
No, 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 no break. Affordable workforce housing, I meant to say, both.
All right. I know we've had a lot of talks about this over time, so we're going to talk a little bit about the past, talk a little bit about what's going on, but the biggest part is what we want to do is solicit conversation from you on what we really want to do in the future, right? So number one, the biggest thing that the county's done over the last several years is to establish and fund the housing trust, right? And that housing trust has proven to be a really good ally and asset, not only because of the funding and because of the multi-county regional approach to it, but I would also say because of the expertise of somebody like Claude Hicks. I think he's become a good asset for us as the county. I think there's something that, and we'll talk a little bit more about it later, that he can be more of an asset going forward as our technical expert to help us make plans to really make a dent. I know that there's been justifiable frustration over, we've been talking about this for many years, when are we going to do something? That's not just you guys, we're, we feel the same way, because it is such a big elephant to be eaten, and you don't know where to start. And we went to the supposium yesterday, which was really well-done, and I'll talk about some of that data in just a few minutes. But that was a presentation of market data, which is important to understand, how did we get here? And how big is the problem really? And are we unique? Are there similar situations around the country? But the bigger part was at the end, and I'll finish with what Neil, Claude presented, which was from a blueprint study of how do we actually make a difference? And we've only spoken in the past about land and money. But it turns out the biggest thing that needs to happen is political will to change some rules. And so we'll talk about that as we get through it. So as an update, Claude sent me kind of what they've done over the past year and what they're going to do in the next year. They've awarded nearly $2 million in grants and, or loans for workforce affordable housing. They've had 88 new units in Beaufort County, 51 homes repaired with, through coordinating with nonprofits, 22 new homeowners working with three different nonprofits. So they partner with everybody, they're not just sitting in there trying to do something on their own. And that's the whole key from starting the housing trust to the operation of the housing trust, is nobody can do it by themselves. Pending 2025 impacts are 1,77,000 proposed funding requests are sitting right now in their, that, for, for home repair, affordable housing, and first-time homebuyer funding. Sites, they have sites all over the place from Beaufort, Ladies Island, Bluffton, Hilton, Headings St. Helena. This is things they've done this year. If approved in December, they have something on their desk now, there's 198 new workforce affordable housing units, 92 homes to be repaired, preserved. Right now, these are things that are sitting on their desk. They already have launched, they mentioned it yesterday, the housing program in conjunction with the city of Beaufort.
That's the repair program.
Yes, home repair, and I can speak to that from past, is there's, just as important as new is the preservation of old, and a lot of times it's only been done through the home program or through senior, senior support programs, but if you can preserve some housing units, we don't need to create as many new housing units. And the last part is they, they sponsored that blueprint for change, which I'll go through some of that information here in just a few minutes. For 2026, they already have $4 million in pre-development requests. They, the potential investments are in preservation, teacher housing, and when I say teacher housing, I would say they lump it also with medical staff and first responders. It really becomes this group of, as the, I forget her name, doctor.
Oh, Rich.
Laura, yeah.
Mentioned that, you know, we have this area in the middle, and I'll talk a little bit about what our area median income versus what the area median house price is and how it's so mismatched. These are the core of a community, and that core of the community are the ones that are being pinched the most because they're caught in the middle of all that. And those requests would represent 570 future workforce units. That sounds great, but we know that the need are in the thousands, which is just daunting to hear. And as we all do, we drive around and we see new apartments being built, and we see new u, units being built, but because the market is serving the market rate, it just doesn't fill that middle bulk that we just spoke about. So this was the alarming thing that I took out of the study yesterday that kind of starts this, is they said that a person should not spend, or a family should not spend more than 30% of their take-home income on their housing costs. That's not including electric and all those things. That's just for mortgage, principal interest in.
Taxes.
Insurance and taxes, just the basics of your. So the area median income is $83,000 right now, which sounds, that sounds not bad, right? But, and there are other, she showed other regions, other states, other cities, where the disparity might be $40,000 difference, $10,000 difference, that, that... That, that, a family right now, in order to qualify for a median home, at their thirty percent of their income, would be a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars plus. So they're less than half. It's half of what they need, so there's, that's that, that's how big that bulk of group in the middle is. And they, and I, I remember buying my first house, we, everybody told their anecdotal stories of, oh, when we used to get out of college, we'd go get our first job when we buy a house. And that just, this paradigm has changed, and our parents would tell us, don't buy a house for more than three times your income. Don't buy a house for more than three times your income. And nationally, now, the price of a house is four point ti, four point nine times the income level of an individual. But in Beaufort County, it's six point nine times. And so, just those to kinda set the stage. Then, those are the issues. And so, we, we know that there's a couple of things that we can do on, we went through the properties. Actually, let me talk about what we've already done. You know Buck Walter's already under, it's getting ready to break ground at first of the year. That's a big deal. That's a hundred and twenty-five units right in the middle of a service center. That was a big win for the county to undertake, and big, big win for Beaufort Memorial to spearhead. Justice Square, we discussed it on Monday, we're gonna get through a negotiation, one way or the other, and turn that into something positive for housing. I was texting with Claude Hicks this morning that they did receive the fi, the final version approved through Beaufort Memorial for a MOU on how to do the redevelopment of those properties on Rebo Road.
Yep, next to TCL, yeah.
Okay, so that was, that's gonna be a big deal for nurses and first responders and teachers in that same group. And then we talked about excess properties, it was mentioned earlier. And when I presented it to you, it was, here are properties that are restricted. Either way, those are off the table unless there's a major undertaking. Then we talked about properties that were planned, right? They have current plans or, and then we talked about the ones that are available. Those are pretty small, that was not very encouraging, but I would throw out there, we're gonna throw everything on the table. We can revisit some of these that have some plans, maybe not all of them, but maybe that you guys make the plan. And so, that's something that you can look at if you really wanna think about how we contribute, or whether that's through sale or donation to affordable housing. Those are things you can look at. So, I can build you a short list of what doesn't have concrete plans, or what doesn't have ongoing plans, or something that's on the fringes of a priority that maybe you wanna reconsider. We can talk about that. And then, the other part is, um, the results of this blueprint. And so, everybody always talks about money. We talk, that's how we started. We talk about property. Those are important because the deals don't make sense, and that's something that Claude spoke about yesterday. He said, you know, while we're, certain developers wanna do workforce and affordable housing, it's not missionary work, right? It's not volunteer work here. They gotta make a buck, so the deal has to make sense. And so, that's where land and dollars come into sen, into, into the picture, but that's not all it's about. And what he spoke about was, time is money. When you borrow money and it takes time, that's even more money. And what that has to do with how long it takes for a project from design to get to construction. How do we prioritize applications in a plan review situation? How can, can we do things like that, where you all, I think you're all familiar, it's happened over the past several years, where, uh, certain federal programs would say, we can't put the thumb on the scale, but we can put forth a program for certain types of grants that go to the top of the page. And so, that, that's something that's relatively easy. But I wanna identify the problems first, then we'll talk about some of the solutions. It is high land cost, we know that, we talk about it all the time. Infrastructure within those, slow permitting, and, uh, we need to make sure that's not anecdotal, but if the numbers are the numbers, and it's slow, it's slow. But some things take time, plan reviews take time, Beaufort County does have some regulations. It talks about long-term revisiting some of those regulations to streamline certain things. And then, the biggest thing that you guys have experienced directly, and I'll just quote it from Claude, is the NIMBY factor. It's, everybody wants affordable housing, but nobody wants it there. Right? And every time somebody presents a plan, it, it, it's opposed because it's gonna do X, Y, Z. So he did a good job, I'm not gonna go through his whole presentation, but I think, I'll send it to everybody, we can forward it to everybody. Cause he tries to defeat some of these stereotypes of what affordable and workforce housing actually does to a community. And so, that's, I'll stop that line of communication, but send it out because part of that is, is having the will to push through, knowing that it's better for the greater community to do certain things. And the barriers is, I know council has spent a lot of time over the years to move into form-based codes and design standards and certain things, re-beadification, that's true, yes. And, and everybody can understand the benefits of those things, but those kind of items, when dealing with affordable workforce housing, he would say would add between forty and a hundred thousand dollars per unit, which makes it instantly unaffordable. He also spoke about impact fees.
Yes, that was very interesting.
And impact fees, while we understand why we have them, uh, the way that we currently administer them, and it's not just us, it's most people around the state, is a regressive tax, right? So if you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, it still has the same, I'll make up a number, twenty-five thousand dollars of impact fees between Beaufort Jasper's connection fees, parks, roads, et cetera. But if you build a ten million dollar house, it still has the same twenty-five thousand dollars. So that disproportionately affects the affordable units. So you talked about, could you revisit some sort of percentage? Could, he, he also, I didn't know this, uh, a lot of places around the country, they can't, it's illegal. But in South Carolina, it's accepted. And I understand it, cause having worked in water sewer utility in the past, you build it for what's here, and when somebody new moves here, they need to, quote, buy their portion of the plant or fund certain improvements. So I understand why there is, it's just something to think about creatively over time. Would you be willing to look at them? And then, the con, he said, the last one is something that you guys are faced with regularly, is density. And in certain situations, if we really wanna do something, this is, the recommendation is we're gonna have to, in order to achieve economies of scale, in order to do this, there has to be density. In certain areas, it's not ever as to revisit your zoning, and those are, the reports out from the blueprint. And it was, um, not just him, some of them are smaller lot, whether, density means smaller lot size, or it could mean multifamily. Currently, the only way that people get density to do things is in multifamily, but if, I've heard council properly in the past, it said they would also like there to be an idea of homeownership and first-time homebuyers and getting back into, there has to be the ability to then have smaller lots and smaller houses. And those are just things for the council that we can discuss, you guys can discuss here in a minute, after I'm done rambling on. So they said eighteen-month permitting timelines, and what they really meant, at the end, they said something that was even worse, is from the, because of all the funding restrictions and trying to get federal money and local money and state tax credits, our state tax credit system that funds most of these projects is way smaller than everybody thinks and way more onerous. From beginning of planning to actually breaking ground can be five years. And so, if you're, just think of free-market business person, if you have X amount of dollars in your pocket and you can make Y amount of dollars, but you, one of them is one year or two years, and one of them's five years, which one are you gonna take? Right? So that the market of people that play in this space is small because of all that. So, it was also echoed before I get to the options by the American Home Builders Association. They had the things about costs of materials, there's nothing we can do about that. But they said, regulation, inefficient zoning rules, onerous upfront fees. And so, those, it's, multiple sources said the same thing, those are items for you to discuss. But beyond that, the things that we can do, those are longer-term ordinances, codes, et cetera. Is, how do we continue to fund housing trust? We've talked about, we have allocation of A tax, is that the way it is? Is there? The, um.
Here Hank is with.
Got it. Or is it allotment? And, uh, one thing we've talked about is, could it be from the sale of property that goes into an account that then is usable for project incentivization? Could it be something similar to how we have economic development where there's an operational funding? And then we have an account that council, council has, it's equivalent to like a site and jobs fund where the house, but, but you could say this is our housing fund, that you have a trusted partner in the trust. Or even, they could come and make applications to the county, but you have money set aside, because right now when somebody comes, it has to be new money. And even the way our impact fee, say waiving, but you're really paying, impact fees is, the, the fee has to be paid. So if council wants to forgive an impact fee for a development next year, in this upcoming year's budget, you gotta set those dollars aside and pay it. Those, again, back to, those are the discussions of, could we continue to just port the ATAX? And then some other mechanism to fund an account so that every time somebody asks, it's not like, where are we gonna get that money from? Yes, sir.
Yeah, it sounds like a too bad thing, but you, you said South Carolina can legally change impact fees, eliminate impact fees. But then you just said you have to fund that if you do it.
So that is your ordinance.
Oh, so we have to change your ordinance?
Right.
Okay. But it's, we can do that, we can eliminate or reduce impact fees without having to fund them under the law, if you have the law present.
You just would have to figure out, back to when we spoke earlier about how we fund parks and roads.
No, I understand that, but if we're talking here about affordable, I'm not talking about eliminating impact fees for developers who come in with a big project. I'm talking about for affordable housing, combinations can be made, we don't have to find the money somewhere else and put it in a fund if we change the ordinance.
That would be an undertaking through, the way it's written today is the fee has to be paid.
No, I get that, but we can change that.
I'm not sure if Chuck is the expert on that.
Yeah, I think that's a state law, isn't it?
Once established, don't go too far down the rabbit hole, cause this is a long-term conversation, Chuck.
Our ordinance has to comply with state law. Well, what, what's the state law, Brian?
So, impact fees are optional for accounting, they're a tool, right? They are a way to generate revenue, and the idea behind them is that as new homes or new developments go in, they increase impact. So, instead of spreading that new impact out across all of your taxpayers, you identify through the study and you target those to pay the impact upfront when they do the development. The way state law is written is that you cannot waive that once you do the study and you implement a fee. You can't waive that for some, it's like a, it's almost like property tax, right?
You cannot waive it for some.
You cannot waive it for some, but you can institute, uh, programs where you pay it with other tax dollars or other revenues on behalf of individuals. There's two ways that we have done that. One, we used to have a program where individuals could apply based on their income levels, and there was a pot of money. And largely, it was for either Habitat for Humanity, or a nonprofit building a house that they're giving away to, uh, somebody who meets the affordable definition, or for mobile homebuyers. That's typically what we see. If somebody's applying for and getting a mortgage and building a house, they typically would not apply, they wouldn't, um, qualify for the exemption. So that was on an individual basis, that has not been funded in a couple of years. So that, that program, the ordinance and framework is still there, but it typically was, I don't know, eight or ten per year is what we would get where folks would qualify. And the fee is between two and five thousand dollars, depending on where they are in the county. The other one is where you would have apartment complexes or developments that would come in, and county council would agree to pay on behalf the impact fees as long as they met the definition of our, of our ordinance to be under eighty percent, I believe it was eighty percent. And the rent did not exceed thirty percent of your income. So it gets very complex when you get through them, but there's no easy way to exempt affordable without offsetting it with additional dollars.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I know we, at some point in time, I thought we were funding, uh, impact fees, um, for homeowners who apply for it in our annual budget. You're telling me that that was taken out, that appropriation was taken out?
Hookup fees too, right?
Say it again?
There used to be a program for Beaufort Jasper, the one that we had internally, there, there used to be, before the consolidation of all the accounts a few years ago, there was a fund called the Beaufort County Affordable Housing Fund for the offsetting of impact fees. That has not had money put in it in at least two years, as far as I know. If we wanna reinstitute that as part of the, the budget process, we can, but that, that is not an active program.
When we started that, uh, we did fund it at some point, and we stopped, I didn't realize we stopped, so.
Yes, sir, I think it was about three years ago, two or three years ago.
Wow. You just took it out, or we took it out?
I didn't take it out, it was part of the budget process a few years ago when consolidations took place. And I don't know at what level that decision was made, but through the budget process, it was not funded. But if we wanna create that, the framework is there, uh, to fund it.
So that fund, and this is for you guys to discuss now, because that fund could be funded in the budget process, or it really needs to happen, just like we talk about with facilities, and just like we talk about with CIP. There needs to be an, an ongoing, this is a long-term process, there needs to be an ongoing dependable funding source, whether that's ATAX or something that you guys build into a budget, to have money in an account to do these things so that every time a project comes forward, we don't have to have, uh, confrontational requests from an entity that's trying to do a project, right? It becomes an application process and a qualification and then a funding.
Any other questions, input, comments?
Yeah, but if you had a twenty, twenty-unit project and the impact fee was twelve thousand dollars, that's a quarter of a million dollars you have to come up with.
That's right.
I know.
And that's, but that's also, I mean, sometimes the housing trust can help with that.
I mean, this is, and that's only twenty units, and there's no other way around it.
No, because if you establish it, you have to collect it. You can have it or not have it, and so, the other, what's bigger than what our impact fees are, is the, the water sewer utility.
That's a big, that's a big one.
Has just increased capacity fees for, and, 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 you know, will go on over the next several years as part of the capital improvement, but it, uh, water sewer connection fees are.
Thousands.
Ten thousand?
Almost twenty thousand dollars if you add them together at this point.
Yeah, you really need to put this where the, yeah, just the connection fees, even if the sewer's already there.
Because you have the capacity to connect.
That's right, yeah.
It almost becomes impossible to do, you know?
Councilman Dawson?
Yeah, uh, we're, we're discussing affordable housing and the impact fee, uh, the issue of, of trying to support the development of affordable housing. But to Chuck's point of the, uh, the impact fee program that we had to actually assist, uh, homebuyers, and they'll, they're basically low to moderate income, for the most part, who, low to moderate income folks who bought mobile homes. And, uh, because of their, uh, uh, income, the impact fee was almost a stopgap for them moving and establishing a mobile home, right Chuck? And so, that, that program, uh, was established to assist, uh, in that effort, and I didn't know that the program went away either, but it was certainly something that, uh, was beneficial to the lower and moderate income, uh, citizens in the county. And I would suggest that we take a look at it and re-establish that. To Hank's, uh, presentation, uh, addressing the affordable housing aspects of it, um, I, I don't see how we get around the affordable, I mean, the, uh, impact fees, because that's, that's our statute, yeah.
Yeah, and unless there's a way to, um, I'm just making a comment, unless there is a way to graduate, uh, you know, do it as a, but I don't know if state law even allows that.
It's an equal protection argument.
Yeah, you can't do that.
And for the use of the ATAX funds as a funding source, it has to be for workforce housing, that's the only reason you can use ATAX funds, nothing else.
Right, but that's what it would be, but I think what really, more than impact fees, they talked about that as an anecdote, because of the regressive nature and that it disproportionately affects the affordable unit. The bigger things were time to mark. The bigger things were time to market and density.
And also requirements, he mentioned hardy plank and vinyl and things like that, design standards.
If you make a house that could be vinyl, hardy plank, on an average house, I think the number was $35,000 actually.
This presentation will be, would like to send out to all of the county council members.
The one from yesterday?
The one from yesterday.
Yes, we will send that out to everyone.
And I think the other thing I'd like to mention about it is that he gave us a challenge, a six-month challenge to address these things at each municipality in each county. And perhaps a subcommittee from maybe natural resources could look at these challenges along with the planning department and permitting and see if we can come up with some ideas on what we can do or not do. Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah, I definitely don't even think we should be considering us getting out of impact fees. If we're going to charge residents impact fees, we should be paying them as well, so I'm happy that, that is the law. Because we shouldn't be able to skirt that just because we're government. But, but that said, I think we, I genuinely think we need to be bigger picture. We have multiple properties that we're never going to use. We're not going to use them, they're just sitting there. At what point can we look at selling those? Fund these accounts so that when people start coming to us, that we have the source already there. We're not talking about $50,000 or $100,000, we have million-dollar properties that we could sell and fund this immediately and get the ball rolling. One of the things I put down in my notes when we first got this started, we know most of that land on the cooler track, they're not going to use that entire thing. So at what point are we going to start considering that maybe that's where we could do a large-scale workforce housing? It's right in the middle of the county going both directions for work in Beaufort and work in Hilton Head. So I don't know what the design layout is for the cooler track, I don't know what it costs to get something, just an idea of, hey, this is over here, this is laid out this way, to see what land we actually have right in that area where we could do a workforce housing. If we have the ability to sell the properties we have that you guys listed, I think it was last week or the week before, we could put $3 to $4 million in that account to start covering impact fees. We could fight the, find the right partner to be able to do it. We already own the land, we can fund it immediately, and then we just find the partner. Maybe it is Beaufort Memorial, maybe it's the people watching over us every single day keeping us safe.
It's nice to hear this again, it's been too long.
Whatever it might be, but we've talked about this for years, we've said this forever, and we just keep kicking it, we'll, we'll come up with a source, we'll come up with a source. Well, we have a source, and it doesn't cost our taxpayers a dime, it doesn't raise our taxes. We have a process in place that's going on and bluffed in right now. People said not in our back door, well, I, I took that risk to make sure that we did it right there in the back door. And the, the people are responsive, they're gonna, they're on board for this project. So we've talked about it in two workshops now. When are we going to decide to put some of these properties on the market and decide what, where we're going to put that source of revenue?
I think we did give direction to go forward with.
Yeah, the properties that we had as excess, those are not valuable properties, but they're sellable properties. But what, you hit the nail on the head when I said we need to revisit some of the properties. Potentially they don't have concrete plans on them because you guys make the plan and you guys can change the plan. That's, you hit there. And as we have discussed with other examples, sometimes a piece of property, while you could put, I'm not talking about that one, you could put affordable housing, workforce housing on it, it may be more valuable to sell and maybe more bang for the buck to sell and take those same dollars and make a bigger impact somewhere else. So that, the double whammy of your comment hits on both of those.
Yeah, David, do you have any comments online?
No, I don't.
Okay, anyone else, Mark, Mark's in the, in the business.
Well, not, not really.
Not affordable, but the upper end.
You're in the business of making big bucks.
Right, right.
But, I mean.
That was in the middle of me drinking that water, that's what was happening.
The mic's open.
It's an open mic.
But, you know, the, the, where we are as a dog chasing our tail in this whole thing is the fact that, you know, we, we've made a commitment for smart growth and not to upzone properties. And that's really the only way that we're going to be able to do this is if we allow more units on properties so that way the developer can make more money, but then he can provide more lower income. Again, it's, but that's something that we have not made a commitment to do. But that's, that's the only way that we're going to be able to afford it. Because, you know, as Mr. McCollum said, and even Logan went and put money in, it only funds a small number of units. I mean, so not, I'm not saying I am up for the upzoning or to increase units, but that's the reality of where we are with development is getting more units, that way that person, the, the developer can make more money per unit. But then on the flip side, that puts more stress on our roads, on our schools, on, you know, parks, on landings and everything else that we provide. So, I mean, again, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just saying that is where we are with, with everything.
Did you have another comment? No, all right. Chuck, Chuck, what do you think about a subcommittee to, to take this challenge on?
Yeah, I think that, I think it would be great. So something else I'd like to recommend, there are tools in the current toolbox, to, to your point, Mr. Lawson. You have transect zones, you have a comprehensive plan that outlines those transect zones. You have tools within those transect zones. And if it's okay, maybe after the first of the year, either another workshop or at a committee, staff can do a presentation to outline all of those tools in the toolbox so that you can see how, if you desire in different areas of the county, to increase density and use those tools that you already have.
Do we have a way, that's, could you talk to in January about also, do we have a way to put someone at the top of the list for review if it's, say, Habitat for Humanity House or, I, I don't know if we even have that tool, I mean.
You're talking about in terms of how the process, they talked about that yesterday.
Like they talked about yesterday, just another thought they had yesterday. But that's maybe a regulatory thing that we can't do.
No, it is absolutely, absolutely something that we can do and that we already do. What we have to break out is what type of review it is. Putting a house on a single lot, we're within two weeks to get those permits. Where you get into longer wait times is where you're doing a development. So that it comes in and there are so many moving parts, it can take a long time to get developments permitted. But what we do offer is concurrent plan review. Say an apartment complex is going in. Concurrently, while they're working through the development permit, which is the land, all of the horizontal construction, the building codes department will take a digital set of plans or whatever the applicant has, and we will start concurrently doing a preliminary review to get them comments back to make sure that that process is expedited. So although it is linear in form, we do a lot of things concurrently already to help those things move through, whether it's affordable or not. So I just want to throw that out there, that we are already doing some of that. But it is, in, at the end of the day, a very complex place to do development just because of our geography.
Right, and wetlands and all those other considerations. Any other thoughts and directions to staff, yes, sir?
You know, based upon what we learned yesterday, we, you are absolutely right, we do have some tools in our toolbox. We have to take a look at the CDC, we have to understand it. Within our own CDC, we're hampering ourselves at times with, we have design challenges there. You know, we, we like some aesthetics where we're going to say, well, all of the garages should be on the back. Well, that means you're putting a street in. When you're putting a street in, now you've got water and sewer that you have to deal with. That's an added cost to that in when you're trying to develop a affordable, which is another thing. We really have to define affordable. What we mean by affordable, is it based upon AMI? If it is, what's that AMI? How do we comply with all of those things? We have to decide, as Councilman Lawson said, do we want to upzone a piece of property? That's the only way you're going to get enough density for a builder to come in and say, I can make this work. And where in the county could we or should we do that? And so all of those things really have to be discussed so that we can formulate a long-term plan. We're not going to solve it tomorrow, we're not going to solve it in this year's budget. This is a step for this council to take and future councils to deal with.
I had a question, how much the 15% approximately? And we still have to, we have to do the resolution for this coming year, correct?
Or ATAX?
ATAX.
ATAX, how much would that generate approximately?
I believe one of them was 225, we did local and state, so, and the other one was 250, based on historical collection.
What we just heard, that's not a lot of money for, but it's a.
Currently, the one in your local ATAX pays your invoice for the Beaufort-Jasper Housing Trust.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, are we, are we about ready for break? Yeah, she just got back. Okay, so we're going to take a break for lunch and the food is in this other room and.
Half hour maybe?
Yeah, half hour, is that, I think that's enough. Is that, oh, we.
We had an hour book.
We had an hour book?
Well, this other room is about council initiatives, so.
Yeah, well, I think half an hour, I think we're all good with half an hour. Okay, all right, thank you.
And now on the agenda is our council initiatives. And Ms. Harriet, do you want to go over?
She's coming.
Go over what you sent out to us? A lot of them we talked about this morning, too.
We did.
Yeah.
So why don't we cross those off first?
Want to cross those off first?
We'll cross them up, but we're going to include them as part of
Council.
outcome of this.
Okay.
Well, look at the very first one.
So this is everything that council sent forward. So if you want to go down the list, one, two, three, four, and then you have some themes on the second page. So, Cab, since you kind of collected everything, do you want to just go down the list while council is reviewing or talking about their focus?
Starting with number one.
Start right at the top.
Yep. Okay. Fiscal responsibility and accountability. Evaluate opportunities to maintain or modestly reduce the millage rate while ensuring continued funding for essential services. We kind of need to talk about this. It's just something council wants to try and do.
So I'd like to talk about this. This is no news to anybody. I'd like to see us reduce millage. I don't care if it's one mill. Two mills would be better, but to show that we're fiscally responsible and the value of a mill is going up. I'm going to ask Ms. Harriet to talk about that. So I'd like to see if we could slightly reduce our millage. And there are other things in here. By the way, this list came from council members. I sent out something asking you to give input. So the people that gave input, that's where Pinky got this. But I'm all for looking how we can do. And I saw here the comprehensive review of budgets. Mike already talked about that, to look at inefficiencies. I'm interested in the open slots, you know, the vacancies.
Yes.
Because then people budget again for that, and that's extra money. So, yeah, I'm all for the first one, fiscal responsibility.
Any other comments? Anyone?
I would reserve judgment as to what the final millage rate is going to be based upon what we come up with priorities.
Right.
Get from recommendations based upon some other information that we have. Sure, it's nice to keep millage as low as we possibly can. That's always the goal. But we can't be penny wise and pound foolish, where we could have nothing this year and have a huge increase next year.
Well, that would obviously not be our thought, but there are opportunities to reduce things in the budget.
Right. And I mean, you will have minimal growth in the value of a mill, but it won't be enough to accomplish some of the other initiatives you've already set forth. Like we had retiree gap insurance, I believe was one of our assignments in this step plan. So to keep in mind, both presentations came with a price tag. So we do have to think about the fact that we're going to have to figure out how to fund these initiatives as well. So.
Okay.
What's the value of a mill going to be?
I can't give you that number just yet. I won't have it until April.
Councilman Glover?
No, I agree with what you just said. I think we need to make sure that we grow, take care of our needs without cutting current funding. Because I was not aware that we did not have the impact fee funding in those last two years' budget. So just want to make sure that when we do cut, or if we have to cut, we're not cutting existing services that we have been providing and stuff.
Right.
Okay. Councilman Cunningham, you look like you want to say something.
Are we only talking about item 1A at the moment?
All of one.
Anything in one. Any comments on all of one?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
What are we talking about with the last item under number one about the Economic Development Corporation? What is the, what's the suggestion there?
I can address that since I believe in this one. My thought was, and I spoke to Mr. Moore about this, bringing the Economic Development Corporation in-house as a department under the administrator. And instead of being a corporation, it becomes a department. There would be savings for us. We're not going to have to lease a spot. There are other places we could save, and it would be a tighter control.
How do we undo what it currently is?
Well, that's another issue. But we have talked to the municipalities about that, and they're okay with it.
If that's something council wants us to look at, is creating a department, we can absolutely take a look at that. I know my previous job, it is a department. It is in other counties, a department versus a corporation. And we can look at options if that's you all's desire.
And how, where would that need to be in committee to talk about it, to, I mean, recommend?
I think it's a part of what you discussed as your initiatives. Is it something you want us to explore? That's something we will look at in preparation for the 2022.
We would, I think, bring that back in the budget workshop.
Okay.
Like in beginning of next year, right? I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I don't know if we can put the budget calendar.
And it was pros and cons, I'm sure.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Then we have to go to finance committee and then council, because it's a council decision.
Right.
Right. And we would have to add the manpower into our budget as opposed to it being a direct fund to the economic development.
I definitely would want to see the pros and cons, too. Councilman Glover, comment?
Yeah, yes. I think, go ahead, please.
Oh, yes, sir.
You also need to have conversations with the other members of the board with the EDC, the municipalities.
We've been doing that.
Yeah. All right, Councilman Glover.
Madam Chairman, I have issues with this, because we started this here several years ago when I first came on council. One of the biggest problem was that we had economic development in-house. And I think Mrs. Howard or Mr. Dawson can speak about that more than I can. I inherited the new direction for economic development, and it included the municipalities as partnership, along with the county government moving forward. So any conversation of this nature, I think, needs to be brought with them in mind to see whether there is a new direction that they want to pursue, and not just as council. One of the things that I remember distinctively was that we limit the representation on that board, because we did not want that board to be dominated by county government. That was a distinct thing I remember having and discussing. And so where we could have had two or more representative on that board, we decided that we only want one. And we left more representation to the community, businesses, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we need to have a discussion about that with all the players involved, so that we can move forward with this here.
Councilman Dawson?
I'm not going to say we should not bring it under, but I think it should be open to all those other entities that involve.
Correct. This is your discussion on the topic.
Councilman Dawson? I know, do you remember the history?
To follow up on the Councilman Glover comments, when we established the Economic Development Corporation, it included, as Mr. Glover said, representatives from the municipalities, as well as represented from council. But also, it included people from the business sector. And all of those people came in and actually contributed to the establishment of the corporation. And so then you have an organized group of people who are actually from different walks of life, from different business aspects, who are giving guidance and input as far as economic development pursuit for Beaufort County. And so for us to disband that board, the Economic Development Corporation Board, and bring it in-house, then where does, and we need some more discussion of this, but where does the insight for economic development come from, other than the director himself and the county administrator?
Well, I mean, clearly it would need to come from council. We would need to work with you all and establish what are your, what's a strategy for economic development. I think that would be part of the discussion, so that we would know what we would pursue in terms of economic development. And then going out and executing would be staff's responsibility.
I hear you, Mike, the county administrator. But this is, this is going back to where we originated from. Council, under the leadership of the chair and the vice chair, tried to guide this council into the aspects of economic development. And that was catastrophe. And that's how the Economic Development Board Corporation came into existence, because we realized that we couldn't do it. Now, I'm not saying that council members today doesn't have that expertise and can't guide us in that aspect, but that's, that's what brought the Economic Development Corporation into existence, as it is today. So we're like backtracking to where we started from, and starting all over again. And I don't, I don't, I don't see us going in that direction.
Yes, sir. Councilman Passamit?
In order to determine if a change should be made, we need to know the pros and cons of such a change. Second, we need to take a look at the current status, what they've done in the past, and do we need to change some guidelines for the future? Next, we need to know the relationship between Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation and SCA. And then finally, we have to say, okay, based upon all these facts, do we need one or both of them eliminated? And if so, which one or both? So we need to charge you with getting a whole lot of information to us before we can make an informed decision. It's based upon facts, not, well, I think. No, it's got to be factual.
I agree. And that's why we'd want to get direction to pursue this. And I, so to be able to, you know, take a look at the options.
I think stick to the pros and cons. And back to Councilman Dawson's point, I was around, too, during that ugly period of time, and that we were going nowhere. We were spinning our wheels. And the municipalities, that's, we definitely need to have with the managers, perhaps, one-on-one with you. That would be, I think, a good way to get some facts.
Okay.
All right.
And one more thing. When you do pros and cons, so the first thing I'd like us to list is how much the county contributes to that. In the operating fund, because the cities contribute minimal, Port Royal pulled out, Beaufort City was a hair from pulling out. That tells you right there where they are. Hank's looking at you. We've talked to the other municipalities. So how much are we funding operating? And we, the county, is funding the site fund. And we reduced the 1.3 mills to 1.3 mills last year. And then we had issues with how it was being used. I mean, I attend the board meetings now. Hank's there, Mike's there, Alice's there. We had issues how it was being used. So this council, you all weighed in on it, how to put a more prescriptive use of the fund, so we could tighten it up. And that is taxpayer money. So the question would be, do we bring it in-house? And all of, those are all pros and cons.
Councilman Dawson, yes.
Yeah, if we're talking about the number one on our budget retreat, you know, going back to the BCEDC, you know, I'm for leaving it the way it is right now. I'm not quite ready for us to look at bringing that back in. However, if we do some things, look at it, that might be something we consider. But to the other items on the list, I mean, I think we've looked twice before about consolidating the fire districts. And there was always some reason why it couldn't be done at that time due to tax districts and different tax bases, and I think loan and debts and things like that, that you couldn't bring them all under one roof, because each had their own entity that was there. I mean, obviously, the second and third one on the list is, you know, comprehensive review of department budgets and transparency. I think every year, we've done a better job at keeping control of that and doing whatever we can. So if there are some things we can do that we're not doing now, we should be doing them. But again, we've taken all the, all the recommendations that have come up and tried to implement them every year. There's been a big change since, you know, I first came on, and Joe and Larry came on years ago. And then the millage rate, I mean, I'd love to say we've lowered the millage rate. However, we cannot do that if we're going to be funding USCB, TCL, the hospital, doing the, doing impact money to give back, you know, trying to redo our boat landings, trying to do our parks. You know, it'd be great to say that, but, you know, I think that we keep the millage where it is, and we're not raising it. You know, I think that's the best thing, provide services that most of the county would like. But again, if we can lower it, great. But again, I think right now, everything we've talked about today hasn't been about reducing services. It's all been about increasing services.
Okay, very good. Unless there's further comments about.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly. I'm not necessarily sold on, I guess, bringing it in-house. But I will say, we're having this discussion up here, but we just granted $260,000 a couple days ago. And that was the argument we had about it, was you said Port Royal already pulled out, Beaufort's about thinking about pulling out. But the funding that we gave for that plot of land to create the pad, the revenue goes to the town of Beaufort, not us. And it's going to be somewhere around $230,000 to $250,000, which is more than we put into it. So if we're not going to bring it in-house and make that change, we need to make smarter decisions on councils, where we basically just lost $450,000 when you look at it. That's a payout and a loss, when really, we should have either had somebody else chip in, or the town of Beaufort chip in, since they're reaping the reward when that gets sold. So I do think we need to either take a harder look on council of how we're spending that money towards it, or maybe we do look at it and bring it in-house. But something's got to change, because right now, we're just saying yes and rubber stamping every single time.
Okay.
And I think, Madam Chairman, just to make this comment, because that's a good point that Mr. Cunningham just raised. But the history of that is, and I can, I think, Ms. Howard, I think you and Mr. Dawson can speak better to that than I can. However, the Commerce Park that we have in Burton is basically and county council, county property. And if I'm not mistaken, that Commerce Park was up for sale, and the county failed to purchase it.
It walked away from it, yeah. The county walked away from it, yeah.
And the city bought it. But as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't really matter whether it's in the city or in the county when it comes to jobs, because my people will be going somewhere, either in the city for the jobs or in the county. But it's in the same area. Now, why the county did not purchase that property at the time, I can't tell you why. The wisdom of the council at that time said, no, the city bought it from under them.
Okay. All right. I think we'll go on to number two, employee compensation and benefits. You see the four bullets there. We've talked about the implementing the step in merit pay, classification study, the COLA, retiree health benefits, and then the PLT cash out options. So. retiree health benefits, and then the PLT cash out options, so.
Yeah, so we added the PLT cash out because there was some discussion at Monday night's council meeting about some other options versus just PLT cash out, maybe for, I think, public safety employees. But as you know, in October, Ms. Mead presented some options for our step in merit pay compensation plan. I think that was a pretty high priority for everyone at the February retreat last year. We've got some figures, and we also talked about the retiree health benefits as well. So this section is for you to discuss as we continue to move forward with both the step plan. And if you, she's here, if you have any questions regarding any of those, but I think the presentations were pretty thorough in terms of both.
And Pinky, I believe that's on the agenda for tomorrow as well, is it not?
Yeah, we're going to do a regroup over that, yeah.
Which one, the?
It's on for Friday.
The merit pay and the.
It's under item seven A for Friday.
For Friday, yeah.
So we can, you all can discuss it, or we can talk about it tomorrow, really up to you all.
Most of them will.
When we have the information would be the appropriate time.
Oh, right, we'll do it, we'll do that part tomorrow then, okay. What about the PLT? Any questions about that?
Yeah, there was some discussion at Monday night's meeting, so.
I think it was going above.
What we currently do.
What we currently do, correct?
Because of the number of hours that some people have, the question is, do we just continue in the way we are? Do we make some exceptions for certain classes of individuals, or do we do something entirely different?
Does anyone, would we?
Sure, please discuss so we know which way to go.
Yeah, particularly the EMS and fire people.
Yeah, I'm going to let Catherine talk about it.
Have a lot of hours, but the, there's also physical responsibility for that, too, if we do make exceptions.
That's correct. So currently, the policy on our PLT has an annual cap of 320 hours. We increased that from 280 in January of 2024. So there's options we can consider. We, over the last, I think we said about 10 years now, we've been offering a PLT buyback program. So if that's the intent to continue that, we can look at increasing the cap for the buyback on public safety employees there. We could consider looking at our policy to increase the cap for public safety employees for their rollover annual limits. We could, we could consider like a deferred plan for public safety, because I think, I don't think my recommendation would be to increase the limit because they're still not benefiting them to be able to use their PLT, and that seems to be the problem. But what we could consider do is write out a caveat in the policy for PLT accruals for the detention center, EMS, sheriff, and whoever else we deem appropriate under public safety to where they don't have that disability leave account, where the rest of us county employees, once we hit 320 hours, it rolls into a disability leave. Maybe we just increase that so they aren't losing it, and, you know, when they do retire, they can use that towards their retirement cash out. So it's still there and not getting lost in the cyber world like the rest of us do. So I mean, there's several options we can consider. It's, but I think, you know, I think it was clear Monday night that at least one, and I got a lot of head nods, that you guys want to see something for public safety specifically, so.
If that's the direction, I think we can come back and begin your budget process.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just doing something different for a specific group.
Correct.
All right, Councilmember Bartholomew.
Actually, I believe, Catherine, I think you answered my question, but one of the things I was thinking about with the disability rollover, could there be a payout for those individuals where it just dumps into that bucket?
Yeah, we could look at that. I can bring back an option that would cover that.
Just throwing it out there, but I do continue to hear from public safety and those folks that that's an issue.
Absolutely. It's hard for them to use their PLT because they're so short-staffed and, you know, they need, they need, need the manpower on the floor, so.
Yeah, but can't take length.
And that's unfortunate. So it's having some type of separate buyout instead of, you know, going into a disability leave or, like I said, increasing their cap. So it's still theirs to cash out whenever they separate employment, but I'd hate for them to have to wait until they leave to, to get that benefit. People need, we got to find ways to take care of them now.
Councilman Cunningham.
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind. I don't have the answer to it. I don't think any of us up here do because we don't work that schedule, we don't work that lifestyle. So if staff is going to go look into this, can we please meet with them and talk about their departments to see what they actually want and see if it's feasible for us to make work? I wouldn't, I'd hate to put a policy in place that they don't even want.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's the only thing I would recommend, because I also know it's hard for them to take their time off because of the way the schedule goes, too. They're already getting some, usually like a couple of days off together, so, you know, a lot of people play that game as they should, you know, rightfully so. You did 24, you got the 48 off, that's when you make your weekend, so however they do it. That would be my only recommendation, whatever decision they think is best for them, and we can fiscally do it, that's, that's the direction we should go. It shouldn't be our decision to dictate how it goes.
Okay. Anything else on number two, employee compensation and benefits? Want to go forward to infrastructure?
Well, listen, on the retiree health benefits, we do have an idea how much that is.
Right, we do. We have preliminary numbers from the Burton Basin.
Cost?
I think what we need to hear from council is, what are the parameters of eligibility as far as are we going to look back for folks that have already retired, or are we going to implement effective July 1, 2026 for people that retire going forward? That obviously will make a big difference in the cost. But the, if we're going to look back, the numbers that were given in that presentation in October is what you're looking at.
That's what.
It was roughly $500,000.
$500,000 if we look back. Do we have anyone that, we can't vote, but anyone that didn't want to look back or did want to look back? Yes, sir?
I think we put ourselves in a bind by looking back because we're going to go back this far. So somebody is going to be left out who was just this far back. I think that becomes a problem for us. Whereas if we say going forward, I think, as I have stated here, we're protecting ourselves legally.
Okay. Councilman Callen, and then Councilman Dawson.
We had a series of lawsuits with three categories of retirees in it, I think. Did they all get settled, Brian, or?
We settled the lawsuits.
Right.
And then we had settlements with the people that weren't part of the lawsuit.
Right.
And gave them money.
Right.
And each of the people who were either party to the lawsuit or that we settled with that weren't part of the lawsuit signed waivers of liability.
Yeah.
Now, there are some people that we missed that weren't part of that that you may want to consider. So if they weren't, if they haven't signed a settlement agreement and waived their claims, you may want to consider that. You don't have to, I'm just saying that there are at least a few that weren't part of either group.
Yeah, so I, I thought there were three groups, I think it was two, but there's also another larger group that has pretty much remained silent except expressed interest in what about us? Is that the group you're talking about with that dollar amount?
So I want to clarify your question and also kind of piggyback on Mr. Passamit with where do we draw that line? As a reminder, from the budget, or excuse me, personnel workshop we had last month, that line will be drawn at pre-65. So we are only looking at providing a defined contribution amount for retirees until they reach the age of 65.
Right.
And then we would not supplement them anymore. So that's where that line is drawn, and to your point, I believe Brian and I took a quick look, and we'd have to really dig into the files a little closer, but I think we identified possibly only less than half a dozen folks.
Oh.
That are pre-65 that were a part of that.
Oh, good.
You know, we did get one inquiry just today, last night, asking about it, because he was in Japan when all this was going on, so he wasn't part of that.
Yeah, so we're considering, though, re-establishing a retiree benefit between the time they retire if they're 55 until they're 65, is that it? We're not there yet.
Yeah, subject to certain conditions, certain length of time.
That's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
In essence, yes, a defined contribution amount for those folks.
Yeah, to Joe's point, you know, I, he's right. I think that if you're going to have a look back, you're going to have to really carefully draw the line, but if you've already established that age group, well, that should, that should hopefully satisfy a look back, don't you think?
Councilman Dawson?
I would think so, yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to get an answer.
Yes, I would think so, and I'd rather be 100% sure who we're talking about.
Yeah, but if there's somebody that falls outside of it, we'll hear from them, and then, you know, they'll be able to, we'll be able to address that.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
So that would be something, if we, we draw the line, $500,000 more approximately.
Right.
We'd have to budget for that, and we'll need to make a decision.
Yes, and the reason we recommended the defined contribution versus the defined benefit is we can control that cost. If, if we find that it's getting, you know, that population's growing more and more, maybe that, that reimbursement we're giving might not be $500 a month, maybe, maybe this year we can only afford to do $450 a month, so we can, we can control that cost.
So let me ask about a timeline, if I may, Chairman.
Yes.
So the people who may be considering leaving now, how long will it take us to reach a conclusion on what we're going to do with regard to the up to 65?
I think that's a funding, how quickly we could fund it, I think is what.
So you currently have no funding for this in the '26 budget, so we would, we would hope to, we would recommend doing it effective July 1, because we'd have to plan this in fiscal year '27's budget.
So then if we did it July 1, anyone who leaves between now and then, what category would they be in?
Well, you could open up the category going back a period of time, like starting one January of this year, but it doesn't begin until one July of next year, if you want.
Well, if you, okay, just let me understand this. You go back to July, did you say January or July?
Once you adopt this, you can say it's effective from this date going forward, but it's not going to begin being paid for until the new fiscal year when there's funding one July.
We would accrue the benefit, and we would book the liability at that point.
And that.
Yeah, you lost me.
So that, if I may, that, that's what we're asking for, is what eligibility period are we going to look for? Are we going to say people that have retired as of July 1, 2020 going forward? If you're still in that pre-65 criteria and the other eligibility criteria we have in place, you are eligible, or is council's desire to say no? Anyone that retires from July 1, '26 forward are the only ones we would consider for eligibility?
You can't eliminate five years of people who, who had, well, may have even had a benefit when they signed up, then lost it, and now we're going to reinstate it, but not for them.
Well.
It's, it's a difficult question because.
Yeah.
You had it for a period of time.
Yeah.
You ended it in 2016.
Right.
So for the last 10 years, you haven't had it. So anybody starting between 2016 and now has not had that benefit. Only the people that started work prior to 2016.
Right.
Thought there was a benefit there.
Right.
And they hadn't retired yet. Most of those we've addressed if they've retired or anything, but the few that still are employed with us are what you'll have to deal with as far as are you going to allow it?
Right.
But I caution you as far as going back too far before you approve this, because I don't want new litigation opened up to everybody challenging our back.
That was the real question, is where were those people, the litigants who had, who were successful with either settlements or were winning? Where was, where was their hiring and retiring?
The people that were part of the litigation and part of the settlement that weren't part of litigation, I'm not worried about because.
Oh.
They settled, they signed the liability claim. They waived that pursuant to the settlement. So we've got to settle with them. So they would have a tough time showing that they're open. It's the people that weren't party to it.
Right.
And that were working for us and then subsequently retired that you're going to have to consider. That's who we'd get sued by.
And if I could have one follow-up to that, too, a slight correction with, with what you stated, Brian, for those that were hired after 2006, we had already told, there had already been memos put out that.
16, you mean?
No, 2006. If you were hired after 2006.
Yeah.
You knew coming on that that was not a benefit available any, any longer.
After 2006?
Mm-hmm. If you were hired, we grandfathered them in for anyone that was hired prior to 2006, and we stopped the program altogether in 2016. So for all current workforce that's been here from 2000, post-2006, that was very clear upfront that that is no longer a benefit available to them.
There was no benefit going into retirement for people hired after 2006?
We were still paying the grandfathered folks in that we had.
Yeah.
And that stopped in 2016, but I, I remember my first day of employment signing a paper to understood that.
You weren't going to get a health benefit in retirement.
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's a new wrinkle to me, but.
Sorry.
Does that make my argument more?
Yeah.
That we should do it prospective, not proactive?
Yeah.
Because we now are talking about a workforce that.
Right.
Started in 2006.
And were informed.
Most, yes.
Yeah.
I think it makes it.
That could be very costly.
I think it makes it cleaner, but it's the political decision we have to decide. Which way do you want to go?
No, I think we absolutely should be doing something in this arena. The question is, can we afford the cost of going that far back?
I believe we'll have that number, will we not?
Yes, we'll have it, okay.
Well, knowing where you want us to start will definitely impact.
It sounds like we'll start prospectively. It would be on July 1, 2026.
Not retrograde.
If it's approved by council, it has to go through council to get approval.
Right, okay.
I have a question before we leave. On balanced COLA adjustments with merit increase and benefit costs, we're self-insured. I said at that meeting where they talked, we are self-insured. Are we solvent in our self-insure, because someone said we haven't raised benefit costs in a couple of years?
Yeah, I said that upfront, so.
This is a.
The healthcare benefit.
Yeah, are we solvent in?
We're, we're in the middle of reviewing our current rate structure, so that's why it's an initiative from, from the administration, because we have not finished the past couple of years, fiscal years, in the black, if you will. We haven't increased, and you probably have, the last time we increased, did we, have we ever increased? But we've not increased in quite a while, but insurance costs have continued to rise, so we are reevaluating our rate.
Slight correction, we have increased rates in FY '24. We increased premiums, we increased co-pays, because that is one of the flexibilities with a self-insured plan. We have the ability to increase not just the premiums, but how much are you paying when you go see the doctor? How much are you paying when you go to the emergency room? So we, we did increase those costs in FY '24. We also implemented a spousal surcharge in FY '24. We've done a dependent audit in the fall of '23 and found quite a bit of savings there for removing some dependents that were no longer eligible. So since then, we have been asking for those required documents ahead of time, so we don't get caught with that again. But, but to Pinky's point, we haven't done any increases in '25, but we did some in '24.
Do you require annual review, does a, employee have to verify the spouse or dependent every year?
Yes.
Because I, I know with federal civil service, you have, you have to verify it every year, so.
Yes, that's, that's some of the new initiatives we did since our dependent audit.
Okay, all right.
So was the answer we are solvent or not? I missed that.
Sounds like we're on the edge.
Yeah, currently we're not. Fiscal year '24, we ended at about $1 million under, and then in fiscal year '25, we're closer to the $5 million, so.
Five million short.
Yeah, we, we're reevaluating. Apparently there were some budgeting issues also that occurred during, because I wasn't here for the '25 budget, Catherine could probably speak to that, that the fund wasn't fully budgeted as it should have been, which contributes to that $5 million deficiency, but yes, we do need to reevaluate.
Okay.
Chairman, just a quick question.
Councilman Glover?
Yes, when you say we are managing, who, who's really managing this fund?
So we partner with USI as our insurance brokers. Those are the folks that were here at the personnel workshop, and every year they give us a forecast, and they give us two different projections to consider, and those projections are provided over to county staff at the finance department to put into the budget what had occurred. Year before last is that forecast was given, but it was not agreed on with the previous CFO, so therefore it was not budgeted as it was forecasted, and it told on us.
Okay, so we don't see that until you bring it before us, just say we need to do something.
It's, it's in the budget. When we bring the budget to you, there is a line item for group health insurance. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Did they forecast this?
Hold on, I think I heard Joe first.
Okay.
We're self-insured for health benefits and workers' comp?
Correct.
Okay.
Which will be two separate line items in your budget.
No, I understand.
Yes.
How do, how do we fare with workers' compensation?
Um, well.[1777.43] Risk management budgets are workers' comp, and he gets projections that are pretty accurate. We're not in a hole in that one at all, but Kyle has pretty good numbers for that.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah. So did the projection say we were going to be down?
So the the ten years we've been working with USI, we've been coming, their projections were coming in about three to four percent lower. Or, excuse me, the final numbers were coming in three to four percent lower than their projections. This year, it did come in about seven to eight percent higher. We had an unfortunate situation with an employee that occurred at the end of last fiscal year. Not to get into too much detail, but it was a very high claim for premature triplets, so it was costly. But had we had been budgeting what was forecasted for this first ten years, we should have had plenty of reserves there to to fund that. And I'm just not sure that was happening over the years.
Don't we have catastrophic insurance?
We have the stop-loss, that's, yes.
Well, how do we take care of this five million dollars in the red if that's what it comes out to be?
It's a helicopter.
That's a helicopter. I wasn't going to say it, but okay.
Currently, both the self-insured, the two funds we have are special revenue funds, and they roll up into the general fund on your financial statements. So unfortunately, the general fund fund balance is going to absorb that.
Okay, all right, well, it's good to know this. Know where we're going. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Dawson.
So so is it clear that our employees who were hired after two thousand, two thousand and six going forward, upon retirement? Then they retire, we don't cover them anymore? Or do they have the option to continue their insurance, health coverage with the county?
Currently, no, sir. There is no health insurance for individuals that retire that were hired after two thousand, well, there's no retiree insurance for anyone currently.
And and we don't get them the option of continuing their health insurance through the through the county?
Outside of Cobra, no, sir.
And they, until they're, and then, of course, when they're eligible for for Medicare.
Right.
If they choose to not retire till they're sixty-five.
Right, and and the reason being, the the liability for carrying that is, Pinky will probably have to pick her up off the floor and tote her out. But that's why back in two thousand and fifteen, council had decided to eliminate that program when they were seeing the liability on the books for carrying your retirees. Because we were also, what we're proposing right now is to carry retirees through sixty-five, but prior to that, we were not, we didn't have an age limit, so we were carrying them indefinitely, and it was.
Even after sixty-five?
Oh, yeah, up up until they deceased. Yes, there was no limit at all.
And also, just to let you know, a lot of local governments are getting away from OPEB liabilities, which is post-employment, other post-employment benefits. We're not the first ones that did it. I've worked in Dorchester, they got away from it, they grandfathered in a certain percentage. I know Ori County has done away with OPEB, and does the stipend situation like we do, so it's not foreign. It's just, it's a large liability to book on your financial statement.
Okay, all right, anything else, last last call on number two?
I'm still trying to simulate five million dollars and coming from fund balance. Fund balance doesn't go forever.
No, which is why we're doing a review and we're going to right-size our rates.
Okay, moving on to number three, infrastructure and capital projects. There's three bullets under that one. Complete existing capital and infrastructure projects before initiating new ones. Review project priorities, design, funding needs, long-term maintenance obligations. We talked about that this morning, some. And emphasize sustainable planning to support county growth and service delivery. Do you, you and Mr. Moore want to talk about that?
Sure, well, really, remember, this entire list came from council. We want your discussion and your points that you want us to focus on moving forward. It sounded like four or five emails that came through, there was concerns about several projects that are standing out there on the boats that need to continue.
And I think that's exactly what we're going to look at, or why fund new projects when we have completed other projects.
Okay.
So to the point, for us to look at this, we are going to look at this as part of the CIP process.
Okay, all right. Any any council members want to make any comments? Yes, Councilman Glover?
Yes, ma'am. When I when I hear infrastructure, and a lot of times we think of roads, et cetera, et cetera. But when you come to the rural community, infrastructure could also mean stormwater drainage in rural areas. And I would love for us to look at that as being part of infrastructure, because one of the problems we have in the rural community, not only rural community, all over Biffrey County, is water and water settling. And in the community before, we had a lot of agriculture ditches, and water got moved off because of that. But there's not a lot of farming in all over, particularly St. Helena. There are in cer- certain section, but those ditches and stuff were there, and they were basically, some of them were being maintained by the county because they were a major thoroughfare for water movement. I would love for that to be a part of infrastructure as far as moving water in certain region. That's just my comment.
Yes, that's what contributed to this.
And if we may, stormwater is an enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise.
So Jared is up, and he can talk about, we've done some studies and some master plans and and how we would go about funding these, and maybe we need to look at other areas as part of our planning process.
Well, we had a good discussion, Mr. Glover and Mike and myself just the other day, but to bring that to all the council, particularly on St. Helena. We have done studies, that's our plan inside of stormwater, is when we have an area that we know of need, we're going to do a study. Out of that's going to come recommendations, then we do design, and then we do construction. That's going to be, our goal is to flag the entire county with similar studies. We've got some throughout the area. St. Helena has a study, but it didn't really walk away with any, this is exactly what you need to do. But one of the discussion items that we had, as far as there being a lot of agricultural, is maybe we go back and look at the ditch systems that are out there. Because there's some primary ditches, and then there's just some feeder ditches. And if there's possible for us, with our stormwater infrastructure and our utility, to start taking on some of that primary, kind of like your your arteries and your veins. So if we take on the larger larger ditches, then all the other ditches can drain to that. And so we're going to look at that a little bit closer in St. Helena, and probably Northern Ladies Island is another one that comes to mind, and other areas out in district. One might be another one, or three.
And Hilton Head, I believe we're working with the town on a on on their portion of the master plan for the island.
Yeah, they they have, we're kind of supporting Hilton Head. They're going to, from our understanding, is leading, kind of look at their entirety of their island as far as stormwater and ways that we can support. And then maybe, we've talked about also transitioning assets, whether that's from the county to the town, particularly Hilton Head.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman, pass a minute?
Completing existing capital and infrastructure projects before initiating new ones, if we do that, we're not going to have a twenty-six referendum. Just.
Oh, well, if you.
Because we're not, the projects we have out there right now, from the two thousand and eighteen referendum, still will not have been completed.
And I'm, if I may, I'm not sure who this came from, but it may have more to do with county capital. You're talking about transportation, which I agree, but I'm not sure who put this one forward.
I believe Mr. Bartholomew, but I I know the essence of it, because he's not on there. It was about capital projects like a new park. It was not about referendum stuff, it was not about the two thousand and eighteen transportation. It had to do with what we're currently having the hopper, finishing those before starting new ones, and then saying, oops, we don't have enough money to finish Project A because we started B and C. I believe that was his intent.
Okay, that's not what it said here, though.
Well, I didn't write ChatGPT, so.
It's a combination of all your comments collectively.
But I want to talk about that one as well. One of mine issues, and I know Mr. Cunningham, we have to prioritize passive parks and recreational facilities. I mean, I asked Fort Hank to find all the list of passive parks, and it boggled my mind. And yet, when I looked at recreational South of the Broad, it boggled my mind again, correct? We talked about this.
But there is a master plan for part for the recreation parks. Did you look at that yet? I mean, is that, it was done less than two years ago?
Yes.
And so the master plan, I think what you're hitting at, and and this speaks to the comment, too, is we have a lot of ideas and projects and plans, but we've got to bring those to fruition. And it's nice, somebody, I think it was Councilman Glover, said it's nice to have all these plans, but we've got to get it moving. And one thing that we want to work on as a staff is having projects more developed in order, when we go out for bonding, we want our projects to be in a more ready-to-go, we say shovel-ready, but we really need to be there. And so there may be an opportunity where we work on plans, whether it's the Parks and Rec master plan. So if it's master plan, just like the facilities master plan, but inside of that, it doesn't really give us the granular CIP to start. And in order to start that, then we need to bring that to you guys and say, okay, here's what master plan Parks and Rec said. But we've got to start planning and funding, and and from from infrastructure side, we really need to coordinate what that prioritization is, and then get some initial funding before we issue debt, which might just be general fund, fund balance, or wherever that comes from. And plan those and prepare them before we're ready to actually turn them into projects.
And there were a lot of public meetings for the Parks and Rec, and we, and the current director was not on board when those meetings were done, but a lot of a lot of public input on the master plan for Parks and Rec. And I think we do need to get a little bit beyond that master plan, might even have to have a mini review of it again, because we do have a new director. But, you know, it's it's, those public meetings were well-attended. I went to several of them, and a lot of a lot of people were there, and that's not to be discounted, but but we might. I I like the point of, let's get some more details on what it would take to implement it. You know, the problem south is that where are we going to put land, where are we going to get the land for the fields? We know we need them, but where are we going to get the land?
Well, and and the same thing with passive parks, too, is we own a lot of properties, we're rural and critical.
Yeah.
But if we want to start making that properties accessible, then we've got to develop the plans.
And I I'll just make a point, in terms of funding, and I think Chuck may address this, passive park funding sources are, there are other sources besides just general fund. Whereas typically with Parks and Rec, you can get a par grant, but those are fairly small. So a lot of that is, all these park and rec projects going to compete against all the other CIP. So the question is, do we want to have some type of funding earmarked for Parks and Rec and some source for that? So that's a potential discussion item.
Yeah, we talked about maybe having dedicated millage, because one of the issues, South of the Broad, and I'll speak about that, I wasn't in on the Parks and Rec's conversations. But South of the Broad, when we sat at a chat with council, and the six, the eight-year-old girl stood up and said, my mom has to drive me to Savannah to practice soccer. Ridiculous, and we don't have enough fields, and there, this is my third year, and Logan talked about, we've not talked about adding.
Right, and the county operates the parks, for the most part, inside municipalities, I think Hilton Head accepted. But county funds those parks inside municipalities, so it's a county-wide.
There just aren't enough.
Correct.
Before you say, I talk, let me just say, Ms. Tabanak, we we said, we said the same question.
We have the same question north, too.
Yeah, we don't have a place for soccer as well.
And the school and the school district now is cooperating on letting us use their fields, too, which is great.
So if it's okay, I'd like to share a little bit from staff's perspective, when we look at the budgeting process and we we look at funding sources for either Parks and Rec projects or what we call passive parks. When we look at our forecast for passive parks, we'll call them passive parks, right, access points for rural and critical and green space. There are only a few sources of revenue that we have available to us. We can apply for grants, and we can compete for a very, very limited amount of dollars in the annual CIP, which very frequently, we're behind on some, you know, a number of projects, whether it's nine-one-one stuff or things that are pressing that year. And when you allocate, there there's very little money left year over year in the CIP to do large-scale projects, right? Passive parks, it's three to six million dollars. With rural and critical, which is now drawing to a close, some funding in those bonds was set aside for access points and parks. That money was expended very quickly because it was done years ago, and by the time you get to build, you know, get the build of park, there's not enough money there because of the escalating cost. So there are, I would say, probably fourteen, fifteen, sixteen parcels that are out there. We have plans, because, I mean, we've issued eighty-ish million dollars worth of debt in rural and critical, and folks in the public want access to those lands. So when we say passive park, what we're doing is we're putting in parking, some lighting, a picnic pavilion, and a bathroom. That is the extent of passive parks.
And security.
And some security, like a gate.
Yeah.
So when you look at passive parks, we're providing access to what the public has already invested in. That program, rural and critical, is drawing to a close. So over a number of years, as we develop those access points, that's going to take care of rural and critical. We can apply for ANH tax, ask for money, we compete for that money, there's no dedicated source. Green space is different. To date, what we have done with parcels is we've partnered through grant agreements, and we've given money out to other entities to purchase property. They have absorbed the cost to provide the access, Hilton Head and others. If the county uses green space money, or when the county uses green space money to purchase fee simple properties, the ordinance says that the county must provide access to the public. That was part of the referendum, it's part of the the rulebook governing those, but we can use green space funds, part of the hundred million dollars, to build those access points. So you really have to get nuanced, and you can't lump everything in together with Parks and Rec projects, because there's a bunch of different type of projects. There's rural and critical land access points, and there's green space. So I just wanted to draw a differentiation between all of those.
So, but wait, with green space, you just said it, the ordinance requires that we have to provide dollars to allow access to the public, right?
You have to provide access to the public.
And have we been taking those funds out of green space? Because I never heard that come forward.
We have not purchased a fee simple piece of property that is under county ownership under green space yet. We have done grant agreements and given money out for other entities like Hilton Head and different ones to buy it, and as part of the grant agreement, they have agreed to provide that access.
Like the tree in Port Royal.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
I call it the tree, what's the name of that park?
That was actually rural and critical.
Yes, right, it was.
So that's another one that we're going to have to to get funding for to provide access, which we will have to compete for money against other CIP projects if there's no standalone funding source, because there's no more rural and critical money for that purpose.
But the town of Port Royal's, you know, maybe they will.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, sir, Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say, you guys said a land in Bluffton. That land is still for sale in Bluffton from five years ago and still today. Nobody has closed on either of those properties, right there on Buckwalter. So we're talking about fields, which we've talked about this before, this is before Eric Greenway, before Mr. Moore. I think it's called, Jared, what's the name, Willow Track?
Willow Run?
It's right behind Rose Hill and all that. School board has not closed, and the other part is up for consideration of green space currently. But we're talking about a place for ball fields, and the biggest need, it's still available, I'm going to say it again for five years straight. So I have no problem bringing that back to the table again if there's people or appetite for it. If you need a funding source, again, if you don't want to use it for workforce housing, I know we have some land we can sell.
So I do want to point out, and I'm not going to speak for Audra, but Buckwalter Expansion Phase Two puts a number of multi-use fields, and we're about to start construction. We've been in permitting for over two years on that. So we're about, we're about to start construction, that's a ten-plus million dollar.
How many acres is that?
I'm not sure, six, I think it's six fields.
Do we know what room we have left out there on that site?
So on, as you pull into the facility, on the right, this will encompass all of that. There's a little bit on the left, but it's all wet, so it would take a lot of dollars to mitigate that and develop it. So even though you look at acreage, there's a lot of wetland out there, so this will take care of most of the developable property that's available.
How is it in permitting for two years? Help me.
You don't want to know that answer.
Yeah, I do.
So, no, it's it's fine.
Didn't they find a new species?
So.
No, for real, they did, they found a species, and it put us back like six miles.
Well, what they did is they found endangered species habitats. They didn't find the actual species. So what we do is we we ask for funding to go to design and permitting. We do the design, and we start submitting, once we get the design, which takes a while, we submit that to the state. It goes through the state process, it gets parsed out to the Historic Preservation Office, to DNR, it goes to a lot of different departments. And then those departments provide us with input and tell us how we need to modify our plan, and there is some back and forth with that. And in that particular instance, they found a habitat that was. And in that particular instance, they found a habitat that would facilitate an endangered species. And we had to mitigate that and then we had to go back, do some redesign work, which takes months and we're, we're almost there. So it's, it's a process. And they're all one-off, unique processes when you get into it, it's, it's, it's tough, but we get through it.
Okay.
Well.
Yes, sir, Councilman Dawson?
Yeah, we're discussing, um, access to passive parks. Uh, but in our rural areas, uh, Mr. Glover, as well as myself, we have community centers and, uh, parks, recreational park. And, uh, we have a issue, particularly in my district, with the D O Community Center and the, and the, uh, ball field, the grounds. Where the community doesn't have access to the grounds, uh, as a whole, as far as the utilizing the baseball field and access to the community center. And I understand from staff, uh, and this is prior to, um, Mike coming in. And I, I had this discussion with Eric Greenway initially when he came in. But we need to look at our policy governing, uh, the rural communities, uh, community centers and, uh, parks. And see if we can work out something to, uh, say on the weekend, if the community wanted to hold a community affair on the grounds or on the field, utilizing the field, then, um, we, we need to have something in place to address that. Rather than, um, rather than hold the community hostage to not being able to actually utilize the grounds for community activities.
We actually have that in place, sir, there is a policy and, and a procedure for that. But I'm more concerned about the accessibility that you mentioned, I'm not aware of that. So I'd like to, maybe after this, discuss that with you. I wasn't aware of access to the fields.
Well, I, well, maybe I stated it wrong. They do have access, but, but, um, under, prior to Mike coming, under the prior, uh, Recreation Director, uh, she didn't permit the community to utilize the ball fields.
Well, I can tell you that has changed.
Okay. So, so you're saying as of today, if the community wanted to go out and hold a weekend gathering for a baseball game or fun activities on the fields, that's permitted?
That is, it's a process, but yes, they can apply, but it is a process, but yeah, that.
All right, all right, here, here we go with the application part of it. Now, when they apply, is there a fee that they will have to, uh, pay for the use of that?
It depends on what type of event they want at that location.
What kind of activity they plan?
So they can have family reunions, they can have, you know, um, recreational events like, you know, hosting tournaments and stuff like that. We do have that in place.
Free of charge, doesn't cost the community anything.
Well.
There, therein lies the problem.
The, the cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and in other words, in other words, you got, you got a, you got a ball field, it's in the community. The Parks and Recs for the county doesn't use it except during, say, the baseball season. And after the baseball season, it's just there in the community, it just sits there. The commit, the ball field as well as the community center. And so I, I've, I've initiated this con, this conversation with, uh, Mike when he first came. And I'd like for us to continue this discussion to follow up because it is an issue for the community. Now, I can't speak for Councilman Glover, but I speak.
No, you're speaking well for me.
Primarily for myself.
You are speaking well, thank you.
So I, I'd like for us to put that on the agenda and have further discussions, or if we can come to some resolution.
Absolutely, but I will tell you that it is available.
Okay. And if I may, Audra, perhaps we could, a workshop on fees or something for parks, is that, would that be beneficial to school? Or what fees we, we charge? I don't know that those typically come to council for.
They do not, but keep in mind, I mean, the Parks and Rec has a board, it's an advisory board, but they do have a board.
Yeah.
So, um, but yeah, we can definitely have a workshop and discuss those fees, um.
And those fees are set by the board usually, aren't they, or agreed upon?
Correct.
Right.
Recommended by the board.
Recommended by the board, okay.
So when we do that revision, can we put Fort Fremont down there? Again, it's a visitor spot and now buses can't go in there.
I think Ms. Racketson can address that.
That's a passive park.
Yeah.
So it's, yes and no.
Yeah.
So we have a business use policy. The reason we have a business use policy is because they are passive in nature and they need to be accessible to all taxpayers.
Correct.
What we don't want, and the, the whole purpose of the business use policy, and it took a while to get that through, right? We refined it. So when you start talking about tour buses, these are companies that charge a lot of money. And they want to take fifty passenger vans. And they don't want to have to pay the fee and get scheduled to drop off folks like every other business would have to use. They have access, they just have to fill out, pay the fee and get on the schedule. So that we don't wind up with a route in the middle of a residential neighborhood out in Land's End with fifty passenger buses lined up because it's part of the tour. So there's a mechanism there, it's not that they can't do it, there's a mechanism, they just need to fill out the application, pay the fee and get in line. And have equal access, just like all other businesses, so that in conjunction with those businesses that are for profit, using the facility, you and I and any other member of the, um, the, the community can also go out concurrently and use it without them being overrun. Because they're, they're really not attractions, if you will. I know that it, they are because of their sensitive nature and their beauty, but we want to keep them that way. So that's what the business use policy was there for.
Well, the reason it keeps coming up at A-Tax is because the A-Tax committee questions, we keep funneling A-Tax money to Fort Fremont, yet we don't let buses in that generate that money, you get it?
But that's not a factual statement.
Well.
They just need to abide by the business use policy.
Well, evidently they don't like it, so I'm just passing on the Fort Fremont.
You mean the A-Tax committee doesn't like it?
Nope.
Well, maybe.
And the buses don't pay the fee is what's the problem.
That's the problem, maybe at the next A-Tax meeting, um, either yourself or Stephanie could come speak to that.
Yeah, we could go over the business use policy.
Yeah, and go over the business use policy. I mean, anyone that's been on any tour in other, other states, other countries, um, it's a, if you go to a public park, they, they, you know, you're traveling with a for-profit group, but they're expected to stagger their time to those public places so that they don't interfere with the general public too. So it's not bombarded by five hundred people from a cruise ship, um, at one time.
Every time I take my family to Hunting Island, it's like eight bucks a person, so.
Yep, yep, unless you join friends of Hunting Island.
Unless you join, that's right.
Mr. Cunningham.
All right, Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, I'm pretty sure it's this body or it's the body right before, we put that fee schedule in place. And that was the one that we sent back to staff and then, so businesses can buy a yearly permit or they can schedule their time for the event, because we were having people set up photo shoots, people dropping off buses. If you're running a for-profit business on taxpayer-funded land, yeah, it's the same argument we were discussing two weeks ago on the boat ramps. It's one thing when you're talking about a fishing boat with four people, it's a whole other thing when you have somebody bringing in ten jet skis and they're tied up on a dock. Same conversation we had before, so.
Okay.
I mean, they just, the process has been there for a couple of years, it's been successful. So if that bus company doesn't want to pay the fee, then maybe they shouldn't be running a bus company.
I think we need to educate the A-Tax committee.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
We understand, Mr. School.
This council, the last year or eighteen months called it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they understand.
And there, there are some limits of use because we don't want them to get, they don't want, we don't want them to lose the character.
Right.
And they need to be used for the, you know, for the purpose that they were purchased for.
Okay, are we done with number three?
Yeah.
Kind of, did we skip to four?
Yeah, we don't have the four.
Where's four?
We're right at five.
We're going right to five?
You skipped four here.
Where's four?
Chat G P T skipped four.
That's all right.
Just can't win.
That's why we need an A R. All right, number, number five slash four, external funding and partnerships. Re-evaluate funding of outside agencies and nonprofits through a transparent, criteria-based review process. Shift focus, I'm going to go through all three. Shift focus towards self-sustaining models and reduce long-term reliance on ad valorem tax funding. Continue supporting engineered healthcare while requiring data-driven accountability from providers as to numbers and where the shortfalls occur. I'd like to speak to the last one first. I've spoken to Russell Baxley about this and I'm sure Buford Jasper Health would be glad to do it too. He has all kinds of data to show the money that we give to engineered care is not, not what they entirely depend on. It's really just a drop in the bucket for their cost for engineered care. So, um, I think when we get to that point in our budget, we can ask both of those to provide some data on how many people they provide for, um, total costs. You know, he, he has numerously said that the, uh, particularly mental health patients or rotation between emergency room, the detention center, hospital, and, you know, those are the kind of costs that I think all of council would appreciate hearing some actual data, um, before we vote on our budget.
Okay.
And when they present, we'll ask them to do that.
Right, we'll ask them to present when you present this budget.
That was, that was my, one of my comments, so I'll open it up on all three of these.
I don't see where that came in, or where did Chat G P T get that?
Um, some of your, uh, the mil, the entities that receive millage as well as the, um, the list with Island Rec and all.
Oh, okay, because. Because there was no question about funding the engineered care.
Oh, what, I don't.
That came from me.
That was, yeah.
Oh, that was you, oh, okay, then there was a question.
But I think the general discussion was.
Yeah.
Based around outside funding or outside agency funding overall.
Okay.
Okay.
Open it up.
So, let's see, it's David, David's back on, David, you had something on this.
Well, um, I, I know that you all had brought up, sorry, there's an echo. I know that you all had brought up about how the community grant fund was formed. Do we want to expand that and bring some of these outside agencies into the application process in order to avoid the political process that we've been going? But then there, on the flip side, there's also discussion about reducing that as the whole community grant funding as well.
Are you referring to the community services grant?
Yeah, community services grant.
Audra will speak to that.
Yeah, I don't know how deep in the weeds you want to go, but this, the allocation of funds has changed over the years. Originally was established, what I have found in my research is two thousand and eight. Now, that amount that was allocated to these agencies and some did include outside agencies, has changed over the years. So, you know, if we're specifically talking about the community services grant program, then, um, it, it has evolved into that. It was originally established as something different and over the years has changed to what it is now. The community services grant program, where it falls in the human services department and is budgeted every year.
So. And I agree with you, I don't think we need to go into the weeds with it today, but I know that Tab and Alice have both brought it up in the meeting, so. And I know we've had some conversations about it as well.
I mean, I brought up, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of it and I brought it up at the last meeting. But I don't think the average person in the world knows that we fund thirty something nonprofits with their tax money. I can, I can write a check to any, any nonprofit I want, that's my job. But I'm not sure the public would say it's okay for us to fund four hundred thousand dollars to nonprofits. And by the way, that four hundred thousand could fund our retiree benefits without impacting the budget. I'm just throwing that one out on the table. But that's my point, I don't think the average citizen would think it's okay.
Let, let me, uh, let me respond to that if I may.
Yes.
A lot of these outside agencies and nonprofit agencies, uh, actually, um, acquire funds from county council to actually help provide services for the public, the community, uh, that the county does not provide, um, it's a, so they're, they're actually doing a s, a public service to the community that we at county council, we don't fund and, and we don't, we don't actually operate ourselves. So that's, that's where some of this, these funds are going to.
I, I'd just like to clarify that the community services grant program that we currently have is for five oh one C threes. You have to be, there are certain criterias that you're, you have to be eligible for. So we're not speaking about outside agencies, but to Councilman Dawson's point, it, it is fi, it is nonprofit organizations that the, the county does not typically fund.
Oh, I understand all that because I looked at the list, but many of those on the list, not all, uh, Mr. Dawson's group was different. Many of them get funding from every which way. There's three of them on that list that get a lot of funding from Sun City in particular. And one of them just got a two hundred thousand dollar grant from somebody. So again, I question, what would the average resident say that we are using their tax money to fund nonprofits? That's all I'm asking.
In rebuttal, I would say, um, for instance, Hope Haven does the forensic, um, investigations for children who have been molested. And they work closely with the solicitor's office. And yes, they do get funds from other outside agencies and probably many of us have written a check to them in the past. But I think it's the county's duty, unless we're willing to get into that business, that we provide some funds. And they go through an application process every year, they're audit, they have, have to, all these groups have to have a, a, audit.
There are reporting standards with it, correct.
There are reporting standards they have to meet.
Yes.
And, um, you know, if county council wants, that, all these are recommended through, if you elaborate on that, how the, how the funding is recommended, um, by a review, if you could get in the weeds about that.
Well, she told us about that at the last meeting.
Well, she needs to, I think, we need, we need to repeat it because we're all here together in a workshop.
So if a, a nonprofit, you know, there are certain criterias that have been, you know, established and council approved many years ago. So, um, if they meet the criterias, then they submit their application. And, um, staff, the director and myself look through those applications and then it is, um, a review panel. A review panel, anonymous review panel, um, goes through those, looks at the entire application. And one of the questions on that application is, do you receive any other funding from whoever? Um, and then they have to submit their financials and then, um.
Like, do they get money from United Way or private donations, that's all included?
They will have to put that on their application process, yes. That's a, that's a question on their application.
So to me, the question is, does county council want to pick and choose which one of these get funded? For instance, you, you seem to have strong, um, statements about the one that got two hundred thousand through other sources. Do we want to, um, I won't say override, but do we want to pick and choose which ones get funded, um, despite the panel's recommendations? So that's the question, I think council needs to.
That's not my question, you have a panel that recommended it comes to us, the council votes.
And it's a recommendation to council.
It is a recommendation, yeah.
It's a recommendation.
That's not my point, my point is, the community services money should be used differently, that's my point.
So you would, you would like to do away with it completely, okay.
I would fund retiree benefits.
One, one question if I may, the, the dollar amount that's earmarked each year, is that, that's by council, right?
Correct.
You all choose to fund this program to a certain amount of dollars.
A certain amount, and I've, I've always promoted that we, we not funding it enough. Whereas I think my counterpart here would like to see no funding for it, so I think that's the question. When we do our budget, is it a up-down vote, do we not want to fund it anymore as a council?
And, and currently, right now, in the past several years, it has been three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. And that is, that is approved by council every year in the budget process.
Right, and I've always said it's never enough, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, how many taxpayers are on that committee?
Um, that's a good question, I don't.
The authorizing committee, the ones who decide.
The recommends, they recommend.
Well, they ultimately, so it, it, they kind of make the recommendations and then it's, you know, sent to, to staff. Um, sorry, I don't have that, that.
Ten, twenty, fifteen?
Oh, no, um, I would say seven, but don't quote me on that number, I'm not quite sure the number of that panel.
From the community, making a decision to fund these, the four people in the community.
They are community members, yes.
Got it, okay.
The recommendations, yeah.
Correct, correct.
And the reason it was.
And it changes every year as well.
And the reason it was established to begin with was because individual groups were coming to individual county council members. At least that's what Fred always, um, educated me about when I first got on council, asking for individual amounts of money for their, for their agent, for their nonprofits.
Correct.
And this was a way to kind of even the playing field.
Correct, it was an opportunity to remove council members from that. And then ultimately, it's brought before you as a recommendation.
Okay, so unless there's other, um, comments about this, I think when it comes to budget time, we'll either decide to fund it or not fund it. Okay? Anything else on that one?
I, I have one question, what's our follow-up with these organizations?
So they're required, so the money. So they're required, so the money, if they're awarded the money, there are two dispersments within that year. And there are two reporting standards that are required. The first takes place in the spring. If they do not provide that reporting, then they will not receive their second dispersment.
So they have to tell us what they spent the money on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And how many were funded in the last fiscal year? I mean.
This current one that is pending?
Thirty-something.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one were funded.
I believe thirty-one, and we received fifty-two applications.
And what was the largest and, and the least amount funded? Do you know, off the top of your head? That's a hard, that's probably a trivia.
No, I know. I mean, you mean what is?
Which, I mean, which group probably received the largest number of dollars and which group the least amount of dollars?
For what is pending right now?
Mm-hmm.
That council has not approved, that what I brought before you before finance?
It's on the finance committee for Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It is on our, I have that number. I didn't know if you wanted me to share that right now.
That's okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll look at our packet and see.
Okay. It is in your packet.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, staff is going to keep that as a line item in the budget at the same amount. The council either votes up or down.
Right.
And same amount, less or more.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, you have a question?
The advisory board, who makes up that advisory board?
So the director of the human services department decides on the panel.
And where do they, they just pick people out of where?
No, just the, the partnerships and the collaboration that we have with the community. That is the purpose of the human services department, is to collaborate with, you know, the community as a whole and organizations and nonprofits and for-profit. So they make that determination of who will sit on that panel, or ask an individual if they would like.
Can we get a list of who's on that panel?
It's anonymous, and we try to do that.
Oh, it's anonymous?
It is anonymous, and we, and we do that for a reason. You know, we don't want them to be swayed at any, you know, yes. So they're not approached.
Like council members used to be approached in your, in many years before, yeah.
And that panel changes every year, and it's a very diverse panel.
You might have a member from Kappa, you might have a member from other boards.
Correct. And if there are, then they recuse themselves. So if, if they are, let's say, the United Way, if there's a representative from the United Way sitting on that panel, then when it comes to their application, if they apply, they recuse themselves.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
But same as ATAX.
Okay.
All right. Are we going to do the second bullet there? I don't even know. Shift the focus towards self-sustaining models and reduce long-term reliance on, have a lot of tax money. Are you talking about TCL, USC?
Millage, yeah. That's what came from the millage comments, yes.
So, okay, that's TCL, USC.
Indigent care.
BMH, yeah.
Economic Development, yes, all give up.
Okay, any comments about that? We've, since we didn't use to designate, well, we did designate before the recession, not me, I wasn't on council. Before the recession, we designated a millage for TCL and USC, and then during the recession, they quit doing it, and then we reinstated it after I got back out on, back on, I mean, after I was on council, so it must've been 2015, sometime around there, we started, we re, we started designating a millage for USC and TCL with the idea being that they needed that from the local government because the state government doesn't necessarily fund them to a healthy, to the amount that they need. So that's part of the discussion. Do we want to keep designating part of a mill, mill to TCL and USC? How much, approximately, how much money does that amount to?
Um, it's 2.2 mills, so almost about $5 million because the value of a mill was little, almost six, 2.9.
Now, does that include?
It gets, right now, you do 2.2 mills, and you split it half between USC and TCL. And then you do .4 mills each for Beaufort-Jasper Comprehensive Health Services and Beaufort Memorial Hospital. And previously, on your tax bills, it, it stated indigent care and higher ed. This year, we have broken it out. It says indigent care BMH, indigent care Beaufort-Jasper, BJ, the acronym. And then same with the higher education mill. So it's been split out on the tax bills this year as we requested.
So what's the upside and downside? I'm not in favor of keeping millage. Why don't we ask them what they need and determine amount? A millage continues to move, so it's a moving target. Why are we not just doing a set amount?
We can, we can, I mean, council can fund however you see, please, just because they asked for a mill. You could say, no, we're going to give you a million dollars versus a mill, just easy numbers. But it's your choice, because at, at the end of the day, the budget ordinance is, you know, passed by you. It has slowly increased over time. Like you mentioned, we did away with it because back during the recession, we couldn't afford to fund mills to outside agency. We were struggling to fund county operations. But since then, it's come back and it's slowly creeped up. And as the value of a mill increases, you're also putting out more dollars out the door, so.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Let me just speak to that, because when it was established, both Beaufort-Jasper, the hospital, USC, and the technical college all became a part of the line item budget for a millage. And the reason behind that is that as the mill grows, their budget will also grow, their allocation will grow. Generally speaking, they've been asking every year for more money, more money. And this was one way of keeping up with that request, because as the mill grew, their, that line item grew as well.
Right.
We can, we can stop it at a point, but I can guarantee you that every last one of those entities will come before us and say, at some point in time, we need more money. They have not come in with that request since we did this. So, you know.
That's also understandable, but like, just like we were talking about the insurance program, over that timeframe, their funding models have changed from the state, because they're both state agencies as well, talking about higher ed. So we have to take that into account as well. And also, at the end of the day, we're looking at a lot of, a lot of high-dollar initiatives going into fiscal year 27. It's just a matter of looking at whether or not you, what you want to change.
You can cut it off, but they will come back with a request, like they do every year, for more than what we've been allocating, but they have been satisfied with what they've been receiving.
Okay. I think, you have to, I think you almost, you have to separate the higher education millage from the, from the indigent care.
Yes.
Because those are really two different initiatives.
Well, you're, yeah, totally different.
Totally different requirement. Any other comments about that? And we're ready to move off of number five?
On to number five?
On to number six?
Five, six?
Yeah, five, six. Strategic investments and modernization, allocate funding for a 2026 referendum with emphasis on transportation and public education outreach. We passed that resolution Monday, and letters going out to the mayors, asking them to appoint people. So use data and communication improvements to increase transparency and strengthen public trust. Any comments about either one of those bullets?
Both are necessary.
Yeah.
I think Mike spoke about that this morning.
I think so.
Yeah, there's some initiatives that we're looking into regarding some performance measures and data-driven results that we want to be able to start looking at, both for infrastructure and capital projects, as well as other county initiatives.
Okay, all right.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak to the 2026 referendum.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know that we're in the process of moving forward and preparing to utilize a focus group to help us advertise and gain public support for the 26th referendum. But I, and I, God knows, I hope I'm wrong, but I, I think, I honestly think that until we complete some of the projects already slated in the 2018 referendum, the public does not have a clear understanding of our intent coming back for a second referendum and resetting ourselves in defeat. I honestly believe that.
Any comments from anyone else about that? Yes, ma'am?
I heard that, I mean, we heard that from every municipality. And all of you received a write-up from every municipality, but every municipality also said they understand transportation were dire at this point, and that they all supported us going forward. Jared's moving on the 2018 projects. We hear about it all the time. Are they all going to be finished? No, especially the bridge is not, well, that's not going to happen. But, yeah, well, but I mean, not by 2020, next year. But, you know, we talked about this with all the municipalities, and they know that transportation is an issue, and they want to support us. As the school district, they were the most potent one to speak, I think. Their, we learned something new. Their buses actually track when they're stuck in traffic and the kids aren't going to get to school on time. They transport 21,000 students either on buses, their personal cars, or their parents transport them. 21,000 kids. And he said, when our buses are 20 minutes late to May River High School, the bus records that and it alerts May River High School. So they're going to give us data on that, which I thought was the best part of the conversation.
Yes, sir.
And what I've talked to people about, and again, you know, is that everyone realizes that we do have a transportation issue. If we don't have one yet, it is coming. And talking to people from the municipalities about this subject is, a few of them, quite a few of them actually agreed that they didn't do a very good job of supporting us last time. And they realize how important it is now that we, we actually do this and get this underway. So, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Dawson's saying, and you're right, we, we had some very, very negative people out there that were bringing up that we needed to finish the projects we had. And after it failed, there were also people that, that said, I didn't realize that we needed this. I was listening to the, the negative things out there, and we realized how important it is. So I think it's important we work as a team with, with everybody. I mean, obviously, we cannot go out and promote it after we have voted in to happen, but again, there are things out there we can do to get, to get the education out of people so they can make up their own mind, but have both the pros and the cons, and not just one side, which seems like that was what they were given last time, and it failed. It didn't fail by that much. You, you take 5% of the population and convince them to vote the other way, and it would have passed unanimously.
And I was, I appreciate the comment on, we do have some headwinds with the 2018, but I think the key is going to be communicating that these projects are important, because, you know, you're, you're talking about safety, you know, evacuation, all the themes that, I think we, when we discussed it with the managers and how this is going to help the, the county as a whole. A lot of these projects are going to be a lot different. We're not going to have the bridge in this, the pathway projects. Our focus is really going to be on, on where we can improve intersections, widening, and then maybe some resurfacing. So I think if we limit this and target specific areas, everybody knows 170, intersections where we're going to connect with, with Jasper County and their improvements, I think we can be smart, intelligent about how we select these projects. And then I think it gives a good message to the public why we're doing these projects. And I think Jared can speak to that.
Yes, sir. Councilman Gellin?
I think, I think that Mike is, is correct in what he said. And there's one thing that we made a mistake on. Well, we made, we made some mistakes. The big mistake was not hiring an outside educational firm, public relations firm, to tell our story. So we failed in the one, in the one penny tax we asked for. Our neighbors, on the other hand, hired a firm to spread the word on why it was necessary. And as a result of that, our neighbors received three one-cent tax increases. So the taxes now in Jasper County are 9%, and we couldn't get seven. And the reason we failed is we did the best we could, spreading the word, which was limited to Friday nights at a library, whereas this public relations firm was every single day telling the story that had to be told on why this was necessary. They didn't have to explain a failure of getting things done, but we tried to do that, and we, I thought we explained it pretty well as, as a COVID-related issue and an inflationary issue, where we couldn't get the contractors to do the things we needed to. But we're, we're taking care of that now, doing less because the inflation stayed the same. But the key to it is getting a PR firm to tell our story. And I really believe that will help us a great deal.
Okay, thank you. And I think safety, not only of each of us, but safety of our children is going to be a major factor, and it was very eye-opening to meet with the school board members regarding that. The letter is going out to the mayors, asking them for their appointees. And I'd like to remind each council member, we need an appointee for this committee as soon as possible. We have a deadline on it, and it needs to be someone, we've already gone over that, we went over that Monday, from your district, and cannot be elected official. So that's the only criteria.
And I would just add, in terms of Mr. McKellen's comments on hiring the firm, when I was at ICMA, there's a presentation by El Paso County, and they had budgeted half a million dollars to this effect. So it could be something we'd need to look at in terms of budgeting for that.
Right.
And I think we'd need to do that before July 1st.
As soon as possible.
So I think we would need to look at that.
Yeah.
And the other part is, we're going to need to look at engineering firms to do cost estimating to support the, the citizens commission.
We have accurate.
So that we can get accurate numbers on this. That's one of the things we discussed with the school district, is they hired two separate firms to do independent cost estimating on the projects.
Right. Okay, any comments back to?
Real quick, to that point, to Mike's point, that is not next year's budget. That is, we're going to need to come to you guys in this year's budget in some way, some shape somehow, and make the, the funding for the, the vetting of the engineering firm cost estimates, the PR, whatever that looks like. That would be in the January, February, that we need to figure that component out.
And we've had the chambers of commerce say that they want to support us too in this effort, in their own ways, that they can. So, yeah, we're going for it. Any other comments about that?
Nope.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Who do we send an email to regarding the person?
You can send it to me.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll consolidate it and give it to Mike and Jared.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
For transportation.
Yep, transportation person for your committee. All right.
December 5th.
What's that?
December 5th is the date we put out.
I'm going to send it when I get home.
Okay, all right, good. All right, what else we have?
Well, that is the, that is the council initiative.
I did want to circle back. I'm sorry, on five, the second one, this is self-sustaining models. Did you get a good feel for what that is, Vicki, on the?
That's why we talked about millage versus a set amount.
For TCL and USC.
So they would self, the idea would be they would self-sustain?
That's what I'm just trying to understand. I really think we have the correct model, because as my colleague here said, they're going to come back every year with an amount of money. Prices rise, okay? The economy is such that the indigent care, these people don't have health insurance, so they're going to the hospital, the emergency room, to get services. That's costly. So by having a mill, specific mill, we don't have to change the mill. Because we're a growing county, that mill value changes every year positively. So they're going to get more money on an annual basis.
So you don't want to reduce long-term reliance and go over the tax funding?
No.
No, I do. That was not a consensus, so.
Right.
Right.
I think we need to see the detail.
I think we can start by looking at what their requests are going to be for the upcoming fiscal year, and then make a decision based on that.
Beaufort Memorial and Beaufort.
All outside agencies.
And TCL and USC.
That way you're treating everyone equally and fairly.
More details. Okay, that's, that's, okay, I think we've reached today's conclusion, unless there's something we.
Yeah, so that is the council initiatives that were submitted, and that we kind of went over. The only other, and I'm not going to speak to Mr. Passamit's sheet, but I'll, I'll refer to you to carry that portion forward.
And, and we appreciate you passing that out, Joe, your sheet, I think.
Yeah, there, there are some things on there that we haven't talked about that I think are important. One of the things that is a glaring need, and we are trying to address that, is childcare. I agree. Okay? We have, one of our major themes here is our workforce investment, our county employees, how they get to work, what they have to pay in childcare. So we need to address that. And, you know, you can just take a look at my list. The law enforcement center, that's something that is going to be needed. That is something that is a long-term commitment. We're not going to solve that this year. It's a long-term commitment, but the way we approach it is, what does the sheriff need there? How many buildings? What order do we put them in there? We know we need fire EMS there because that's part of the, the requirement that we had when we purchased the property. Those are the kinds of. that we had when we purchased the property. Those are the kinds of things that we're also going to have to discuss.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Any other last?
I'd like to just piggyback on Mr. Passaman's comment. This is simply, this is different. But last year, we did away with solid waste enterprise.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's something I added on.
I would love, I mean, how did you add, what did you add on? Because what, I would like for us.
One of the things we're talking about is, you know, the plastic bags, okay? But there is something else. We are held hostage, hate to say it that way, because waste management has the facility.
Sure.
Okay?
Yep.
It's very costly for them to pick up our garbage at our centers and wherever else they collect it and take it to that place. If we had our own transfer stations within the county, we control where they go. We are not reliant on Hickory Hill. At some point in time, that place is gonna be capped out.
Six years, that's what Jillian says.
Maybe less.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's something, again, we should start having that conversation. Is there a possibility of us doing something along those lines? Recycling, changing that. We talked about MRFs. Maybe we're not ready for that yet. Right, Jared?
Yeah, Mr. Glover, did you have, you were gonna say something to Southwest?
You wanna finish it? Because he's on a different page.
Okay, well, so, yes, you're on a point. All of our waste goes to waste management. We don't have a MS-3 landfill in the county. The way we do waste in Beaufort County is interesting. We, the way we're mandated by the state is we have to have a plan for all of the solid waste in the county. What our plan says is that we accommodate all residential waste, commercial waste, you have to do yourself. Our interpretation of that plan is that we pay the tipping fee for all residential waste. Not all counties do that. Jasper County, for instance, they, they only pay the tipping fee for what's collected at their collection centers. So if you have private hauler that comes curbside to your house and it goes, they do not pay for that waste that goes to the landfill. Anyhow, when we talk about waste and we talk about the landfill and having a transfer station, it will make for a better solution overall to the citizen because what's happening now, for instance, Hilton Head, say they have curbside service, that one truck goes thirty miles all the way to Jasper County and then thirty miles back. If there was a transfer station on Hilton Head, it could go five miles and it could make, instead of two trips a day, it could make five trips a day, which would bring the cost down for the resident. Our costs would go up because presently, we do not have a transfer station. We would collect it, and we could actually collect a tipping fee as well. But then we would then be hauling waste where today, we are not hauling waste. We're only paying for the waste. But we would have an opportunity then to talk to waste management, and then we could talk to every other landfill in an eighty, hundred-mile range, and then we have a little bit of leverage to talk about what rates we pay for tippage. It's a little bit different again. It's a big discussion. Hilton Head and Bluffton is the primary place where the transfer station, you'd see the most benefit. But overall, Beaufort County as an organization, our costs would increase, but the level of service for the resident would be improved and potentially decrease their cost. So I know that's a lot, but.
That was a great explanation. Councilman Glover?
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted the staff to look at the possibility of, of doing away with the Stormwater Enterprise program. I know why it got started, because council at that time did not want to increase taxes, so they started assessing fees. But right now, the question becomes, do we, do we really, should we not enfold that into county operation? And because I have a phone call, I need to text back to one of my constituents. They want to look at why are we, why are they paying fees and they're not getting any benefit from that? I don't think they understand what that fee means. That's just services that is being provided by Stormwater, but as far as they're concerned, they have stormwater problems and they're paying a fee, so they should be addressed by county council.
But I, let me make sure I understand what you're asking or saying, because earlier you talked about stormwater on St. Helen and stuff. So you don't want to get out of the stormwater business?
No, no.
You just want to change it from a utility, an enterprise fund, back into a general fund? And that way, on the tax bill, when the resident gets the tax bill, they don't necessarily see stormwater show up anywhere. It just says county operations, and here's the millage, which now, whatever.
And I just want you to look into that to see whether that's feasible and what it means and stuff. Yes.
Sorry, but if we were to, similar to what we did with solid waste enterprise fund, you bring that back into the general fund, you'll have to convert your fee to add to the millage, so your, your operating mill will go up if you do that. And right now, it's stormwater.
But you won't be paying the fee.
Yeah.
Right, and so now you're paying a flat fee versus a tax rate.
That's what I want you to evaluate, the bottom line, because, yeah, the taxes will definitely go up, but the bottom line should be the same, but it may not be.
Right.
That's what I need you to address, to see whether that's.
They do an update every year before they submit their budget, and currently, the way that the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund is, is very self-sustaining and has a healthy fund balance as well.
I know that too.
But I understand your question. Basically, similar to what we just did with solid waste, the money wouldn't. So we have a $200 million operating budget, two hundred, what did I say? Yeah, and essentially, the money would still be there within the operations of the county. It would just slide from enterprise fund back to general fund, but it would, you wouldn't lose a mill, gain a mill, it would just, I guess you would on that.
And that's what's.
Overall. You would have another increase in millage.
You would reduce the fee and you increase millage.
But some people's taxes would go up and some would go down because the fees are different for different residents or commercial.
Right, and depending on how much impervious.
Yeah, so it would be a, we, it would be an exercise that can be evaluated and we can.
That's what I'm asking you to do, yeah.
If you wash for the county, but some would get an increase in tax and some would get a little bit less.
Yes.
And to, you know, Councilman Glover, some of my constituents have said the same thing. Well, I pay this fee every year. What am I getting for it? I'm like, you're getting a lot more than what you're paying. And, and Public Works has been very good at illustrating that to them, that they are getting a lot, a lot more money for a lot of services that they wouldn't necessarily be getting if it wasn't an enterprise fund.
Because commercials pay a lot.
Because commercials paying because of the impervious.
We can do the exercise that you're asking for, and then, again, bring it back to committee, through a committee, and then have that discussion.
But I, and once they, once they see what they're actually paying and what they're getting, they, they, oh, okay, I see. Really am getting a bang for my buck.
There are complaints you about that. As far as seeing that fee there, you'll have more complaints when their taxes go up because you've changed the fee to a tax.
Yes, yes, I heard. I mean, it is a healthy fund.
Don't tax me.
Okay, tomorrow, we're meeting at nine o'clock?
Yes, tomorrow's schedule is a little bit more on the administrative side, and we will start at nine. It's likely that we may finish early.
I think it's highly likely we'll finish.
Highly likely we're gonna finish early.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's all we have for today.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.